Well, at this time, I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is our September 4th, 2012 City Council Meeting. We are located here at City Hall on West Bridge Street. And at this time, I'm going to ask Glenn Ward, President of the Ministerial Alliance, to lead us in our invocation. We'll follow that with our Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. If you would, please rise, and we'll join Glenn in the invocation.
Would you pray with me, please? Our Heavenly Father, we're thankful to you for the freedom and the privilege of living in this great country, and for the many blessings that we enjoy living in this particular community. We honor you and praise you that you are such a great and awesome God. And Father, we thank you that our government officials, who according to your word are the authority you have established, to be your servants to do good. You've told us in your word also that we are to be making requests, prayers, intercession, and thanksgiving for all those in authority, so that we may live peaceful and quiet lives in all godliness and holiness. So we come to you this evening asking for you to bless these, our elected officials, as they take care of the business that is before them, and that it will be for the good of our community. We ask that you give them wisdom and discernment in order that they may serve you well in the tasks that are before them. And we ask all these things in the precious name of Jesus our Lord. Amen.
And join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And join us in the Texas Pledge, please?
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the people of Texas, one nation under God, one and individual.
You may be seated. Council and members of the community, I would like to make an official proclamation this Whereas blood cancers currently afflict more than 1 million people in the United States with an estimated 140,310 new cases diagnosed each and every year, and whereas leukemia, lymphoma, and melanoma will kill an estimated 54,000 people in the United States this year, and whereas the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, through voluntary contributions, is dedicated to finding cures for these diseases through research efforts and the support for those that suffer from them. And whereas LLS maintains an office in North Texas to support patients with these diseases and their family members in the state of Texas, now therefore it be it resolved that the city of Granberry joins with LLS in designating the month of September 2012 as Blood Cancer Awareness Month to enhance the understanding of blood-related cancers and to encourage participation in voluntary activities to support education programs and the funding of research programs to find a cure for them. And we have with us Don Armstrong with the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. He's a representative, and I'm going to allow him a few minutes at our open-mic session. And I'd like to present you with this proclamation, sir. We're going to allow you some time there at the open microphone. If you don't mind, introduce yourself, add your address, and you've got three minutes to talk to council.
Thank you very much. My name is Don Armstrong. I'm from Fort Worth, Texas. I'm excited to be here today, and on behalf of the Leukemia Lymphoma Society, I'd like to thank the mayor and the council for this proclamation. This is indeed a big thing for all of us that have been afflicted with any of the blood cancers. I wanted to give you a couple of quick blood cancer facts. As you said, an estimated 1 million Americans are currently battling or in remission from blood cancer. Every four minutes, someone is diagnosed with a blood cancer. Sadly, every 10 minutes, someone loses their battle with blood cancer. And even more sadly, leukemia is the number-one cancer killer of children and young adults under the age of 20. The Leukemia Lymphoma Society is very busy trying to change these facts. The Leukemia Lymphoma Society is the world's largest voluntary health organization dedicated to funding blood cancer research, education, patient services, and advocacy for lifesaving treatments. The Leukemia Lymphoma Society's mission is simple and straightforward. Our mission is to cure leukemia, lymphoma, Hodgkin's disease, and myeloma, and to improve the quality of life for patients and their families. Since 1954, LLS has awarded more than $814 million to research projects. Last year, LLS awarded $68 million in grants, funding to over 280 cutting-edge research programs throughout the United States. More than $800,000 of these dollars went to researchers in North Texas. LLS-funded research has advanced treatments such as chemotherapy, stem-cell transplantation, and now smart drugs, which have become standard therapies for many other cancers. LLS is driving innovative research. Almost half of the new cancer drugs approved in the U.S. since 2000, 21 of 50 of these drugs were approved to treat one or more blood cancers, and LLS helped advance most of them. I'm thrilled to tell you that I am a leukemia survivor. In fact, next week will mark seven years since my diagnosis and treatment. I have no doubt that I have benefited along with thousands of others in the United States from the efforts of LLS. Thanks for the opportunity to join me today. Thank you for this proclamation, and thank you for the time to talk a little about Blood Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you, sir. Well, as I mentioned, this is our open-mic section of the City Council Meeting, a chance where you get to speak on items that you want to bring to attention of the council. Mr. John Bratta, if you would, please take the microphone at this time. Once you get up there, if you would, please just state your name and your address. We'll start a clock. You've got three minutes to speak, sir.
I'm John Bratta. I'm 1118 Mallard Way. Mayor, correct me if I'm incorrect, we have no copies of the budget. The increase for mayor is to $30,000. Is that in the proposed budget? Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I can't respond to you. Oh, wait, that's on the agenda. It's a public hearing during that section, yeah. My increase would be, it wasn't a total of $30,000. It's $30,000 total for the year, which is an $18,000 increase.
But the total is $30,000.
$30,000 for me.
I did a little, I'm not an Old Texan here. I've been here only five years. So I looked into what I knew as cities that would be comparable.
I'm sorry, the man with the numbers just informed me that it's a $12,000 increase. I currently have $18,000.
Thirty's the magic number, regardless.
That is.
Okay. I checked with the Lito, which is only half our population or less, and none of their mayor or their city councilman get any money at all, zero. So I says, "That's, I gotta do better than this." So let me go to Stevensville. Stevensville has a population of about 18,000. Their mayor makes $4,800 a year, and the city councilman make $2,400 a year. I go, "Well, maybe ours is a little more recreational. We need to go to a city that has things, that can promote things, a lake." So I went to Grapevine. Grapevine has a population of 50,000, a gigantic budget. The mayor there makes, rounding off the numbers, $5,000 plus $11,500 for medical. And that's given to the same amount to the councilman. The councilman, however, there make $2,500 a year. So I said, "Let's do this the other way. Let's flip it over, and let me find someone who's making $30,000." And I was successful at almost doing that. I found a city with a mayor who makes $29,000. However, that city has 757,000 in population. Their budget is $583 million, and the name of the city is Fort Worth. Gentlemen, your budget proposal with those raises is irresponsible. I have to even be concerned about the rest of the budget when I see those types of decisions. And you have the right and the power to make those decisions. 4.07 of the charter also gives us the right to recall you. It only takes 230 signatures to do that. Gentlemen, I ask you to use discretion. Let us see some integrity. Let us quit having to watchdog you. We trust you. We want to do that. But this type of behavior really jeopardizes that for you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Tom Baker, 1002 West Pearl. And here we are. We tried getting a budget passed two weeks ago, and it didn't work. We tried three or four different attempts, and nothing worked. Hopefully, it'll get done tonight, because it's not. In a week or so, it gets passed automatically, and it gets passed automatically unanimously. So if you're going to vote against it, vote against it tonight, because you don't, it will pass a week from now. Couple of councilmembers were against the raises. One said he didn't need it at all, or didn't need any pay at all. One said he'd donate the raise to charities. Both good ideas. But there really was only one person that was in favor of the raise, and that was Mayor Pratt. He knows how many hours he puts in. He knows how much time he's devoted to the city. Is he worth $5,000? Absolutely. Is he worth $15,000? Absolutely. Is he worth $30,000? I think as many hours he puts in, he is. Maybe the other cities that only pay their mayors and councilmembers such small amounts should strive to be like Granberry. The $200,000 that comes out of our budget, which is about $12 million of what's discretionary, it's not really much for council and for the mayor to be paid. Nobody complains, it sounds like, about the county commissioners who make five times as much as the councilmembers do. I don't think they work five times as much. They have offices, they have shared staff, they have phones, but I don't think they work five times as much. I don't think they work three times as much. Anyways, but we don't complain about that. We just complain about you folks, and it's pennies compared to what we're spending overall. We had a tax rate reduction a couple of weeks ago, and a half cent really wasn't worth much. I mean, to me, it ended up being two tickets to the movie theater for the year, and I really won't notice that in a 12-month period. But there should have been some compromise between what Mr. Parsons had proposed and what actually was passed. We still have quite a bit of money in the reserve fund, and it's really twice as much as what we really need. Yes, it's probably going to be an earmark for something in the future, but that hasn't been notified, or we haven't been notified of what it might be used for in the future. But really, what I sort of want to also say and what to end with is that, you know, we pay our city council mayors the highest in the region, maybe even in the state, but we also have the lowest tax rate in the area. So how come we have the lowest tax rate but pay our administrators, you know, so much? I don't think it's so much. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Once again, if you would, state your name and the address. We'll start the three-minute timer.
I'm Kay Colerain. I live at 202 South Crockett. My concern tonight are the utilities. Granberry, Texas has the highest utility rate in the state of Texas, and this was presented to the, we really had no vote on it. The City Council voted a 10-year contract giving us the highest rate. We need a break on this. You have proposed that to lower the utility rate on this agenda, but you're going to raise the water rate. This will give us probably an overall increase of 3% on our utility bill. We cannot afford this. We have to have some breaks. Please, I urge you, do not mess with the water. Give us a break on our utilities. You have the audacity to ask for a raise for you. I can't ask for a raise for me. There's no one to give it to me. So please, I don't care about you giving yourself health insurance. I don't think that you need to tax us or burden us with your problems of increasing your salary. I can't increase mine. So I urge you, please, please, give us a break. Do not raise the water, lower the utilities. I ask you this with all the sincerity that I can. I thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. State your name and your address for us, and we'll start the clock, sir.
Okay. Which microphone do we use?
Whichever one you want to grab hold of and talk into, sir. We'll try to hear you.
My name's Keith Tipton. I live at West Bridge Street, and longtime resident of Granberry. And seems like we were here about a year ago discussing whether the councilmembers and the mayor got health insurance paid by the taxpayers. Thank goodness that didn't go through, so we're back now with the question of pay raises. And myself, and my family, and many of my friends and neighbors, we all got together, and we feel that the pay is adequate and should remain the same for councilmembers and for the mayor, because it's kind of a public service job, the way we look at it. And a lot of cities our size, the councilpeople and mayor do not receive any salary or smaller salaries than you gentlemen receive. So we would just ask that you leave the salaries where they are. That was the salary you accepted when you came into this office. So we just, you gentlemen, leave it where it is for right now. And I also agree with Kay on the utilities. We please need some help on those utilities. It's been promised for several years, but nothing's happened. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And the last speaker card I have for open mic, Judy McHugh. State your name, your address. We'll start the little timer.
Judy McHugh, 702 Old Cleveland Road. And my comments are a little different than the previous ones, but I, because I wanted to thank the council for considering this evening the item 17 on the agenda, which is the hiring, approval of legal counsel to help save Lake Granberry. This is an issue that's near and dear to all of our hearts, or many of our hearts, and some of us have been working tirelessly for a long time to save the precious, precious resource of Lake Granberry. And I just wanted to thank you for your support today and for your support in the past, and hopefully, we will continue to see that and go forward from there and save what we think many of us is the heart of Granberry. The square is certainly an awesome, awesome addition, but I just try to imagine what it would be like if we lost the lake, and I have nightmares about that. So again, thank you so much for your consideration for that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, councilmen, we're going to close our open-mic session at this time. I have no other speaker cards. And we're going to move to our consent agenda. Councilmen, you received the minutes from August 7th in your packet. I hope you had a chance to review them. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to accept as presented the minutes from August 7th, 2012.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion from Councilman Hewlett. Needs a second, please.
Second.
A second from Councilman Perkel. Any amendments that need to take place, this is your chance to do so. If not, all in favor of accepting the minutes as presented for August 7th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. Moving on down to the deliberation agenda at this point. We'll open a public hearing. This is item number one, followed by the consideration and approval of the following ordinances. Amending the rate schedule for city of Granberry utilities and set an effective date for the proposed rate schedule implementation. It's coming in three parts, gentlemen. An ordinance amending section 13.08.001, which is in the Code of Ordinances for the Electric System Rates and Rules. Section B is our ordinance amending section 13.04.001, Code of Ordinances, the Water System Rates and Rules. And part C, ordinance amending section 13.05.001 of the Code of Ordinances, the Sewer System Rates. Gentlemen, we've heard from Becky Malden and Ava Gregory, and I want to give a big kudo out to them. They've conducted month-long, several month-long process where they have presented the rate study to the MOAB, which is our Municipal Utilities Advisory Board. They've gone through a process. MOAB is on board with the proposed rate structure for the utilities. So far, just through the rate analysis, Becky Malden has managed to save taxpayers good 75K had we opted to utilize an outside firm to conduct the rate study, which was then in-house. Uncovered system billing discrepancies that were affecting both our electric and our water departments, and a process of reconciling those accounts. And it's going to make an overall utility bill more accurate. At this time, I'd like to also mention that, you know, as you heard from Kay Colerain, we've been suffering with the utility department that's been very reliant upon the electric department. But we need to get it to where each one of the departments, there's three city services departments, a sewer, a water, and an electrical service department, all under the heading of utilities. We have allowed the utilities to be burdened on the back of the electrical utility for quite some time. It's been well over 10 years since anything has been done with the water. We all know that water is a precious commodity. You can go to your local convenience store and spend over a dollar for a little bitty 16 ounces of water. This size of water is over a buck now. Water is a precious commodity. We need to make our citizens and our commercial establishments more conservative by increasing the water rate to where it supplies, a water rate that you, as a consumer, can help to moderate and regulate. I think they've done a good job. No longer are we counting on just one department to carry the full burden. We need to start building reserves. You've heard that the council has been talking of a new water treatment plant for surface water. We currently are allowed 650, can you correct me, how many acre-feet?
10,800.
10,800 acre-feet, which cost us some $600,000 annually that just flows down the water on down to somebody else. We don't even utilize that water. We don't store it. We don't capture very much of it. Most of our water that the city pays for continues on downstream. Last year, we had an opportunity to recapture some of the revenue from that water, because there was a DuPont down south of us who distributes to other municipalities was running short on their water. They had all the water rights used up, and they needed some more water right. Well, what we allowed them to do was purchase our water rights that were not used. That helped to supplement the utility account with a $500,000 windfall. Now, that's not going to happen every year. In fact, BRA has already seen to it that it's not going to happen again this year, because they have a cutoff date come August. August, it's going to hit here. They're not going to be taking any of our water rights. It's not something that we need to consider in the far distant future. We need to be concerned about getting water reserve monies in place immediately. By 2017, we will not have enough surface water coming to us from the AMUD plant. We will wind up seeing a decrease in 2014. Now, if you're like me, you turn around the corner, and you're already in another tax year. 2014 is not that far away, and we're going to see a decrease in the amount of water that the city can take from the AMUD plant. It used to be the SWATS plant. But we're suffering in 2014 by a decrease in our water. And if we don't do something now to start building up some reserves to where we can move forward with a water treatment plant and have it in operation by 2017, the city will be in violation of TCEQ regulations. It's a .6 rule, which says for every resident, there is a certain amount of water that you have to keep in reserve. And if we don't have that, the city is fined for each time, each day that you fall below that criteria. We are supplementing with more drilling of water wells, ground wells, which are going to help, but they are not going to forstay this from hitting us. By 2014, we should be breaking ground so that by 2017, a plant is in operation. And with doing this rate utility increase and balancing act between the three branches of the utility department, our hope is to build up reserves for both water and sewer and lower the amount of capture by the electric department. And I think the staff has done a great job presenting this to us, but I'm a small businessman. And councilmembers, I know you're getting tired of hearing me talk, but as a small businessman, I looked at this rate study that we have before us, and I am asking us to put this onto the table and postpone putting this rate study into action at this time until we have a chance to look at the proposed minimums for the commercial rate. And I'm going to direct your attention to your packet, the analysis of projected utility revenues. If you'll look at the page that says current and projected, it talks about a minimum for commercial electric under the proposed of $72. That's the base fee. And I asked them to just look at my bill. I'm very seldom out the shop. That's why I'm asking for a pay raise. But that's a different story. What I'm asking about right now is about the fact that this increase is a $72 base pay, whereas before, I was paying 14-something. So it's a $50 to $60 hit every month in my pocket. And it's not just me as a small business person. It's every small business person in the city limits. And that, I tell you, I just found out today, pardon me, I got to take a drink of water. I thought a lot of the businesses along 377 were on United Co-op. Come to find out, a majority of the businesses on 377 towards the Walmart store are actually on city electric. So you've got a lot of businesses that are going to hit a good $60 increase just because we've proposed that there's a $72 base minimum. Now, true, we're lowering the rate of the kilowatt hour to 10.95, which is about 11 cents, going down from 12 and almost 12 and 1/2, or a little over that. But I encourage you guys that it might be time to put this on a postponement and maybe consider bringing this back at a later date. I don't think we can get it turned over and handled by the first of our fiscal year. And I know that utility department is counting on having a windfall out of this. The whole reason it happened was to build up a $400,000 reserve. The whole reason it happened was to build up a $400,000 reserve in the utility funds, which is going to help with the water and the sewer proposed plants that are coming forward. But once again, I've just got to encourage you to motion towards a postponement on this to where we can consider a variance in rates. I was told that if we were to take the commercial rate down to $50 for a minimum base for commercial, that it would approximately be about $66,000 hit to the city's $400,000 reserve fund. So it wouldn't hurt too much to go down to 50. Then it was also proposed that a $36 minimum would bring a 100K hit to that $400,000 reserve that's being proposed out of this year's utility rate adjustment. So that's enough from me. Rest of the council want to talk, this is your chance.
Mayor, I agree with you that I don't see how we can go up. I mean, I'm hurting like everybody else sitting out there. And I think if we will do a study on our wells that we approved a $3 million contract on last year to build 10 wells, that water's going to be a lot cheaper than what we're buying from AMUD or SWATS. And that should put us some money in our kitty also that maybe we could reduce the rate. And I'm for reducing it more than what we're asking right now. So I'm willing to say that we should postpone it till we get our numbers together.
Mayor, based on what you and Councilman Allen have brought forward, and I have much more to say on this. I'll wait and do it during the deliberations if there is any on this. But I move that we propose this, postpone this rate ordinance schedule implementation and approval until the second meeting of February 2013.
Checking my calendar, that would actually be February 19th, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to postpone the rate adjustment until February 19th to allow some more time to make the study. It requires a second, though.
I'll second that.
We have a second from Mr. Perkel. So, gentlemen, at this time, we can go into some discussion if there is any.
Well, all I can say is it's hard to tell somebody when they get the $14 minimum, they're going to get a $72 bill every month.
Amen.
Especially the commode class or something. And a lot of the small commercial property, that's all they have. They don't have a shower, they don't... I just don't feel it's fair.
Anybody else want to speak on this?
Mayor, the only thing I had was I thought that we had to go in and approve or disapprove the rate increases to approve the budget. Was that based off our budget?
Let's ask our city manager.
Well, those revenues were there, but, you know, we would just have to rethink the budget in terms of those numbers. We would not put the $400,000 in reserve.
So this revenue was in the current budget?
It was in the current budget, yes.
But I'd like to say where it was. And you correct me, Wayne, but after looking at this, because I had the same question, because you know that question was brought up at the last meeting.
That's me, Gary.
When we had that situation come up. So when you talk about 800,000, it's clear on the slide that they proposed here that 400,000 of that revenue is going to go to the reserve, and 400,000 will go to capital improvement. So it would not touch the operational situation. And if it would, then tell us how we can change that.
Well, what I was going to do, I put the 400,000 in capital investment. We would have to look...
I need you to talk into your mic.
I don't know that we could get all of that in capital investment. What we'd look at is maybe... See, right now, we're going, we're doing, continuing the audit of meters that don't work. And everybody wants everybody to pay their fair share. And we're finding meters, we're getting those working. That whole internal control process started when I took over as city manager. We went through the electric, we're going through the water. There's like 8,000 meters to look at. So we're basically going and we'll have additional revenue. I would manage to those numbers because in the CAFR for last year... And this is where some of the misunderstanding was, and I'll take some responsibility for this. In the projected numbers, we had used the previous budget, which goes back, you know, for that year. And it was 16.5. And so it was looking like we were going to have a huge increase. Well, in the CAFR last year, which are audited numbers, when you subtract out the 500,000 per the CAFR that was actually issued for last year, we came in at 17.5 then. So it was a hot summer, we understand that. But we also look, we did not make a projection when we started this budget, which was back in April, because all the months were coming that really the high usage occurs in these months. Now, we're in August. We understand we're actually going to be coming in around 17.5, it looks like, as well this year, with the increased usage and the weather that's coming down the pike, so.
Wayne, I believe also Ava was telling me that he found like $100,000 worth of money that wouldn't be in...
We're working on that as well. Yeah, there was some reading errors, and we're getting that corrected.
We should be okay.
So that's all part of that audit process.
I want to clarify your words. Manage to the budget that's approved.
Absolutely, that's my job.
Thank you. And the fact is, Laurel said it pretty clearly, and the mayor did as well, Mickey, I mean, and Tony. So the facts are that this SWAT plant situation, this AMUD plant it's called now, there are some situations that went on by the previous councils. Am I correct, Mr. Manager, that we, there has not been an increase to the water bill for 10 years?
That's correct.
And it's my understanding when I read through the minutes that in 2007, 2008, there was a recommendation that it should have been looked at then. In fact, I think you were the financial officer when you came forward and made that recommendation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. My point here, folks, is it's not time to raise the water rates or go up on somebody's minimum and at the same time say, "We're going to lower your electric rate." So we have a motion on the floor. I pray that we will table this, and we get enough votes to do so.
Any other discussion? This time, I'll entertain a vote, guys. We have a motion on the floor to postpone till February 19th, 2012, to adjust this proposed rate, utility rate. And pardon?
2013.
2013, thank you. I knew there was hubbub out in the audience for a reason. I just needed clarification. Thank you very much, audience participation. So once again, we have a motion on the floor to postpone till February 19th, 2013. The proposed utility rate, we'll be bringing it back to council at that time if it is so decided. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note for the record, we have Mickey Parson is of the negative on that. The motion does pass, though. Bringing us to item number two. Item number two. At this time, we'll open a public hearing regarding the proposed City of Granbury 2012-2013 fiscal year budget. Also consider and approve an ordinance providing for adoption of the 2012-2013 fiscal year budget. This is our second public hearing regarding this. And I do want to advise council that according to the charter, section 7.05, proceeding on adoption of the budget. After a public hearing, the council shall analyze the budget, making any additions or deletions which they feel appropriate, and shall at least 20 days prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year adopt the budget by a favorable majority vote of all members of the council. Should the council take no final action on or prior to such a day, the budget as submitted shall be deemed to have been finally and unanimously adopted by the council. In any event, no budget shall be adopted or appropriations made unless the total estimated revenues, income, and funds available shall be equal to or in excess of such budget or appropriations, except as otherwise provided in this article. Just FYI, gentlemen. You know that during our last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion regarding adoption, adopting the proposed fiscal year budget. Once again, I'd like to start it off with entertain a motion to adopt the budget as presented. And if you want to, we'll go from there to deal with amendments.
I would like to make a motion to adopt it, but not without having the pay raise on it, if possible.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, to adopt the proposed City of Granbury 2012-2013 fiscal year budget less the pay increase for council, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. And we have a second by Mr. Tyra. And we can open it up for discussion at this time. But first, I'd like to hear from members of the audience. Well, this is an open public hearing, so. I have a couple of people who'd like to speak on item number two. Cecile Cleaver. This is your time to take the microphone, ma'am. State your name and your address, ma'am.
My name's Cecile Cleaver. My husband Ron and I have lived in Granbury at 1202 Candace Back Drive for 15 years. We were at last year's budget meeting, and here we are again protesting the raises for the mayor and the city council. What I do not understand is why did you even run for office in the first place? In the past, when I accepted a job, I had done research to find out what was expected of me, how many hours I would work, and what the job paid. It's hard for me to believe that you didn't research to find out what this job entailed in the way of hours and work on your part. And I know that you inquired what it paid. But most importantly, could you afford financially to run for office? Either you weren't smart enough to do your research or you're just greedy and want more money. I certainly am not in any agreement with your requested increase in pay in any form. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person to speak on this item, Rita K. State your name and the address, and we'll listen.
My name is Rita K., and I reside at 2400 River Road in Granbury, City Limits. I guess I'll go ahead and say this. I'm in for the motion that's been on the floor and the second. But in case we have any people who are not going to support that, I'll go ahead and reiterate some of the things that have been said tonight. I'd hope I wouldn't have to return here to do this one year later when I appeared before you at the same time last year. After the attendees at last year's budget hearing overwhelmingly let all of you know they did not agree with any compensation raises for council. But here I am again, same song, second verse, one year later. I'm against any kind of compensation raise in any form you put it, given the current compensation. Salary raises per se, or insurance paid for you by the city, or compensation raises. There are increased costs in the city, and thus the taxpayer. Trying to put the raises in as an insurance and election year where you didn't have to say you voted for a raise per se is wrong. Anyone in business knows that the cost to employee is not just the salary, it's the whole compensation package. I'm not against compensation for council members. I'm against them when they're not in normal range of comparable cities. It was said last year by some council members that Granbury is so different from comparable cities. We have to go to budget workshops, et cetera. Do you really think that other cities' councils don't have to go to those workshops? If you do, and you think that we're so different than Weatherford or Fredericksburg, I think that you're out of touch with reality. I'm going to skip some of the numbers, but I just, in my opinion, I think it was inconceivable that was even put in the budget this year. You need to do the right thing, remove it from the budget tonight, and moving forward with actually approving the budget without there. It's about integrity and doing the right thing, especially when it involves yourself.
Thank you, ma'am. And the last speaker card I have on this item comes from Doug K. Once again, when you get to the mic, state your name and the address for us.
My name is Doug K., and I live at 2400 River Road here in Granbury. And I think the reasons have been well stated by several people as far as the opposition to the proposed raises. So I think in the interest of time, I just want to tell you that I'm against you, against the proposed increases in whatever form, increased salary or including provisions for insurance in the budget. I have no problem with you having access to the city budget and paying for it from your current salary. And I think some of you may already do that, I'm not sure. But I do encourage you to remove those items from the budget. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. All right, at this time, we'll close the public hearing portion of this.
I have some comments, Mayor.
And with the public hearing portion of it closed, we can now go into some discussion and deliberation regarding the proposal. Councilman Tyra, you want to speak?
Thank you. Mayor, as I've stated previously, and as I stated from the very get-go when I sat on this council, was elected in 2009. Just to refresh my peers' position at that 2009 date, I was at this desk, sitting right here during the public hearing. I got up out of my seat, and at the public hearing, I spoke from that podium as a citizen. And I asked the council then to lower their salaries to what was reasonable. I do believe that we should have reasonable pay because if you don't have reasonable pay, what you'll have is what was heard about tonight through some of the discussion when it talks about comments in cities. You will have the wealthy, and only the wealthy and the famous, running the city. I've been to several TML conferences. I worked as a city staff member for years in city council meetings. And I saw the people who could afford to go to those meetings and run the city. Unfortunately, those cities like Granbury have a huge bond and indebtedness. We need common sense, regular folks, a mixture of regular folks sitting on a council. And I think we're able to do that here at Granbury. And we did that only when, and I want to say only when, Mr. Allen was elected in 2010. Because when I stood up there in 2009 and came back here and made a motion to lower the salaries to a reasonable effort, I didn't even get a second. Only until Mr. Allen got here in 2010 did we get the pay back to where it needed to be, to a reasonable place. We've never been against pay, but let's make it reasonable. So I appreciate the statements that were made tonight. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that we got it to a reasonable place, but this council received pay many years before 2009. Only until 2008, when they gave themselves a huge, huge, huge pay raise under the previous city manager. And the previous administration did, in fact, the public pay attention. And I thank you all for paying attention. I wish we could have got it done in 2009, but when Mr. Allen got here in 2010, we got it done. And I thank you for that, Mr. Allen. And I pray that you all will vote for this motion as it is on the table, period.
Thank you, Councilman. Anybody else want to speak on the budget?
Well, I can appreciate Councilman Tyra's lack of a second. I think the last couple of council meetings ago, I proposed a 4.5 cent reduction in property taxes, and I didn't get a second. We're talking about saving the taxpayers $450,000, and we wouldn't be quibbling over $42,000 as it is in salaries. So I don't know what we're doing here. We're saying, okay, well, do we want to push $42,000 off? Or we want to take $450,000 out of the taxpayers' pockets coming into next year? It'd be real easy to take $450,000 out of our budget and move it back to the taxpayers.
I think if you'll remember that I did second your motion, and I called it, I agreed, we needed to get money that way rather than other taxes. I believe I did do that. And when I first started, the pay was less than 600 a month, is what you got. Originally, when I first ran years ago, Dr. O'Callaghan, I believe, got $35 a month. So that's gone a little bit from 35 to 1,000, but still. If you consider the time that most of us, I will say most of us, do our earnings a thousand dollars a month because we've saved the city that much money, and you, and myself.
May I also comment that since I've been on council, I've voted for the reduction of the taxes twice. We've moved from a 45 cent rate down to 40.39. In the three years that Councilman Tyra's been on the council, we have not reduced property taxes in that period of time.
Mayor, I want to say one thing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Allen.
Say one thing, I'm not going to get in y'all's arguments, but I probably will anyway.
Step in. It's the world of politics, I believe.
We're not on taxes, but I'd like to see us take that 450 and try to buy our electrical... down to pass that on to these people. Taxes, we pay once a year. It hurts us, or you pay every month whenever you pay your mortgage. But this electrical bill comes every month, and if we can cut that sucker down, that's a hundred percent. If we can take that 450 and put it into electrical and pay it down, I'm for it 100 percent.
That was part of the concept, is that by reducing the property tax, then you would be, you could adjust your pricing over on the utility side, and you would be able to work with that, so. But they're different funds.
I understand. And the other problem is, though, if next year, if our appraised value goes down, then we're in trouble on both sides.
I would disagree with that. You have $6 million in cash in the general fund, you have $2,750,000 in the utility fund. That in the general fund is equivalent of one year's sales tax and/or a year and a half worth of property taxes. You've got plenty of cushion, your debt-to-reserve ratio is, what, 55 percent, something like that? And you're looking at really only needing about 25 percent? How are you going to spend $6 million cash in the coming year?
Well, we've got $18 million or $22 million on a water treatment plant coming up in two years, but what we could do--
That's the utility fund issue.
I'd be willing to do this, Mickey, I'd be willing to make a motion if you'll second it.
We already have a motion on the floor.
We can cut this electrical rate in half tonight for that half--
Well, but what we have before us right now, Councilman Allen, is we have a motion on the floor regarding the budget as presented for fiscal year 2012, 2013, less the increase for the council pay. And if there's no other discussion regarding that, I'm going to call for the question. All in favor of this budget less the council pay increase for the fiscal year 2012, 2013? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion passes unanimously. And with that being said, we move on. Oh, wait a minute. Do I also need to make a motion to approve an ordinance? For the adoption of the fiscal year budget? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance providing for adoption of the fiscal year budget 2012, 2013.
No move.
We have a motion by Councilman Tyra, needs a second, please. Second by Councilman Perkel. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Brings us up to item number three. At this time, we will consider and approve an ordinance adopting the tax rate for fiscal year 2012, 2013 for the city of Granbury. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve an ordinance to adopt the effective tax rate of .399262 for fiscal year 2012, 2013 for the city of Granbury.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, needs a second. Second by Mr. Tyra. Any discussion regarding this, please? All in favor of--
I would submit, once again, I think we could reduce the property tax by four-and-a-half cents and take it down to about 36.5 or whatever that number is, but apparently, we're more interested in other deals, so.
Thank you, Councilman Parson.
I think we need to look at that in future.
It is food for thought for a future council. All in favor of approval of the ordinance to adopt the effective tax rate, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Takes us to item number four. Item number four, consider and approve an agreement for services by and between the city of Granbury and Baker Clearview Operating LLC as a contractor for the installation and maintenance of wayfinding kiosks located within the city of Granbury, Texas. You heard about this, councilmembers, quite some time ago. Part of the issue why it's taken so long is it needed to go before the county commissioner's court for approval for some signs, four signs on the Granbury Town Square. It has passed through their oversight and is now on our plate for consideration. These were going to be wayfinding signs, kiosks that the language, the boards will actually slide in and out and can be changed out periodically. It's a way of raising revenue, advertising, vehicle for businesses throughout our community. The placement of these signs is designated in a map or a sign location plan, and if you look at that, you'll see a designated marker showing the reds are single pole kiosks, and the blues are double pole kiosks. The double pole kiosks are planned to be along the highway frontage roads, and the single poles are going to be in the downtown area as you approach the downtown square. And we do have somebody here from the sign company, I believe. I'm sorry, I don't know your name, sir.
Mr. George Ferris.
George Ferris, thank you, sir.
Let me say before we get started, you know, we have the right to also request locations, and we, as a city, this is what they produced, is looking at from a market standpoint what they thought were the good locations. We requested they put one where the blue sign is now on 377, where you make the decision to go into on Pearl--
377 Business.
Yeah, 377 Business. And also, we're going to put one out on 51, if you're coming into town where the blue sign there is. Well, we thought those were good locations, and he's agreed. Plus, what the city gets out of this is, they do get a percentage of the revenue, but also, they get individual signs where we can direct people to city hall, or to museums, or to the Opera House, or wherever we would like to put them, and that's a free charge. And there is no maintenance, they handle all maintenance, all installation, all sales. We just--
This is a five-year agreement, though, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a five-year agreement with an automatic renewal for two additional years, is that correct? All right. Mr. Ferris, if I could, ask you to give us your presentation. One question I have is the signs that are downtown. Can you take us to the slide that shows the various types of signs? This one right there, go back one, right there. Is this the type of sign that is going to be on the town square?
Yes, sir, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. And then also, in the areas that Mr. McKethin described, in the historic district, in that inset map, if you go to the inset map, there, that number in the red dots, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, those would be the single pole, more historic-looking theme signs that we've worked on with staff. So-- So the number ones kiosk sign would be on the square, and then also in that inset historic area, that the red dots, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And then, as Mr. McKethin described, the other, the blue rectangle number one, they're referenced in the appendix, those would be out on the 377 corridor and in those areas.
So my question on the single pole, are all the single poles going to be right-angled signs to where they have two signs?
Only on the four corners of the corridor square. All the others will be, there will be--
Just way markers in one direction?
That's correct, yes, sir. Now, it's possible, if visibility lends itself, they could be utilized on both sides of the kiosk. In other words, there could be panels on both sides of the same face if it lent itself to that. But they would just be one set of panels going in one direction.
And the panels can be double-faced as well?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They would, not in width, but just in height. Double height.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Ferris from the council?
I've got one, Mayor.
All right, Mr. Allen.
On Highway 51, going towards Weatherford?
Yes, sir.
I don't see anything going out there. We have Abe's Land, yeah, Abe's Landing, it's got several builders there that I'm sure would love to have a sign.
Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
Get one there or not?
We can certainly, we have, there's in the agreement for services, it allows us a flexibility of up to five locations that we coordinate through city staff. No kiosk ever gets installed without city staff approval, period. No other exceptions to that, so. But as time goes on, as demand dictates, we would locate, if demand dictates that one's located out there, then that's certainly, that's certainly would be in the game plan. So we have built in there a little bit of a cushion to add, or relocate one if we were to install one, and there's no demand for it, then certainly, we have no interest in having that kiosk out there that's not working for the city. So we would approach the city staff about relocating it to a different spot.
What is, on the signs you're estimating to put up, what would the city's part of revenue be a month?
They would get 20 percent of the revenue from the kiosks per month.
I know, but I'm saying if there's all rented out, what would the city be making?
It'd be, let's see. Give me one second.
We've actually established fees for each one of the locations. For a single side panel, it's a $50 fee, not to be exceeded, and for the double panels, the fee would not exceed 75, so there is a cap.
Yeah, I've seen that, Mayor, but I was just curious to how much money we're talking about. I mean, it looks like, I've seen these in Burleson, and they look nice. And my back, Mickey and I talked to you two, three years ago--
Yes, sir.
And we want them, but they're pretty clustered together on 377. And my concern is, is it's going to look too trashy. Didn't mean to say that word, but you know what I'm saying, is it's going to look like the signs, sign, sign coming in.
I can answer that question very affirmatively, the answer is no, sir. It may look that way on the map, but there's a lot of separation between those locations. There's a lot of distance between, in fact, point of fact, most of those, you're not even going to be able to see the next adjacent sign. So the other part of the equation is, so let me get back to your initial question. Estimate around, if everything was leased out, around $1,000 a month, but that's, again, I don't want to be held to that exactly, because that's a fluid thing. Panels get leased out, and some come off lease, that sort of thing, but that's a decent number to lease. If most of, if the majority of panels were leased out, it'd be somewhere in that range.
And a certain portion of the panels, as a reminder to council, a certain portion of the panels are way markers that can be utilized for the city and the community as well.
That's correct, sir. 20 percent of the total number of panels are allocated to the city in perpetuity at zero cost. The city never pays a penny for it. That includes artwork design, production, installation. The city will never pay a penny for the program, period. And those get, they can be used for festivals, community events, they get changed out at no cost to the city.
I love the idea of that.
Sure, absolutely, good questions.
When Tony said it, it struck a question with me. What, when this is approved tonight, what is your start date and the actual finish date of having these signs completed and in place?
We would have, in our agreement, we've stated in there, November 30th, we'd start installing, but I'm extremely confident that's under-promising and over, let's see, under-promising and over-delivering, yeah, say it right way. We do all the fabrication, manufacturing, we self-perform 100 percent of the services, so we're ready to get going.
Well, that brings me around to a termination section of the contract. The termination is going to mean there's some severing of ties between your company and the city of Granbury at some point, if it happens, okay? The contract's going to be up for renewal in five years. It automatically revolves around the two with no extension past that two years. So at seven years, you've got signs that you will maintain through that, out that period. But say the next council decides not to go with your signs, are your signs to where they can be replaced with somebody else's generic panels? Because I noticed there's an illegal sign section in here, too.
There's, they're all built on breakaway foundations, just like text dot spec breakaway foundations. So they, a foundation is set, and then the sign's structured, just like you go out and look at all the text dot signs, they're bolted on with breakaway foundations.
So they're easily removed?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Ferris?
I've got one, Mayor. You say they're made of reflective vinyl, I mean, they'll, when the car lights hit them, they'll light up.
Yes, sir. They are, I'm sorry, they're not illuminated.
Is there ever any need for additional lighting on them, say if you wanted to put an overhang light or anything like that?
It's completely impractical, just virtually no ability to get electrical service to most of these locations in the spot they're at. There's no way economically it'd work for us to be able to provide that fixtures and, you know, running electrical service to it and still be able to charge these low rates and do all the production at no charge. It just wouldn't work. And then, in a lot of cases, it's completely impractical to get service there, period. So it just, so the reflective material, that's what it's, that's the whole point of it, is headlights hit it, it shines, it shows up very well.
But if we had an area where we had the existing electricity and wanted to put something like that with it, we mean, we could--
No issue there at all. None at all, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, councilmembers, at this time, entertain a motion to approve an agreement for services.
No move.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, a second by Mr. Perkel. This is a services agreement between the city of Granbury and Baker Clearview Operating LLC. The term of the service agreement is five years with an auto renewal of two following that five-year period. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. This time, we're going to venture down to agenda item number five, discuss and approve the potential options or contracts regarding the completion of the Opera House redevelopment project. Well, here we are again, folks, it's update time on the Opera House renovation project. I would like to report that the city crews have moved forward during this time of a lull on the architect and contractor issue side. Demolition is complete on the interior of the Opera House. The balcony has been removed, as well as the stage. We now have a shell of a building into which the new construction company will be able to start operation and building of a new facility or remodeled facility. I would like to mention that the architect drawings have been an issue with us, they've been a little slow in coming forward, and as a result, we've hit a few snags. Apparently, there was a ruling by ADA recently that decided that we did have to install a lift, which is also allowing our architect to go back to the drawing board and work on figuring out how to install a lift into the proposed balcony. It's been a cat and mouse kind of a thing for us going forward. We thought, initially, we were going to have a design-build concept with one architect, one builder, and we have since found that there was an issue with bonding. And just to recap, Brian Gaffin Architecture will not be able to move forward with the construction portion of this. Brian is staying on board with us as the architect of record for the project, and he has submitted his plans and drawings to a couple of different firms out there. One of them was what's called a buyboard company. The buyboard company allows you to move forward without needing to ask for bids and move forward with that. They have shot us back an estimate that was very exorbitant. It was basically, I think they didn't want to take on the project. Is that what the take was?
Well, the amount was at the level that we needed to move on to another construction company, which we have, okay? It was a little high. So where we're at right now is we're negotiating with Scott--
Scott Tucker.
Scott Tucker Construction Company, which was the second ranked person in the RFQ process.
Yeah, they were also a design-build firm that came forward during that process. Since we already have confirmed an architect in our design-build firm, they are moving forward as, bringing forward a proposal for construction that they feel will fall within the estimated, or guesstimated revised estimate of 1.8 million. Am I correct on that? Everybody's sitting down, I hope. 1.8 million is where we're at right now with our--
Well, that's the proposal he sent in. We're going to look at some engineering, working with Brian, perhaps. They recognize some things that maybe we could lower it, somewhere between 1.7 and 1.8, in that range.
Any other updates that need to be brought forward at this time?
I just wanted the council to know we're continuing to negotiate with Scott Tucker.
All right. Any questions from council regarding this?
Is he on a buyboard?
No, Scott Tucker was actually, and I'll let the counselor speak on why he can move forward on the process, because he was the second-- on the process, because he was the second lowest bid coming forward on the design-build project. Would you like to address that, counselor?
I can just tell you that in purchasing law, if you're unable to negotiate a contract with the low bidder, then you're allowed to move on to the second low bidder, and this company's the second low bidder.
I'm just, my thoughts are this, we've been doing this now for, what, nine months? Shouldn't we...
I've lost track.
It's been a long time. Should we, should we just go out for bids on that thing again and get three or four companies come in here and bid it, since we got the design bill? We might be able to save a lot of money by doing this, instead of just going to the next one. We budgeted one point two million dollars for this. We're at one six, one eight, one nine, two point two. I mean, let's get some bids in here and let's get this thing going. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wanna talk about that?
Would this not be the place and time on the agenda to approve something of that value to the council and to the public? But the fact is that now we're seeing the second bidder come along, because we heard a lot about the second, this is actually what I consider the third, excuse me, but I do consider this the third, and you know where I'm talking about, the way we built this, the way we moved forward. And our goal has always been to move forward quickly, and I think this council did it in good faith to do so, and we're a lot further down the road than we were in 2007, when that council approved the money and could've got started then. But the fact remains that there is some wisdom in what Mr. Allen brings forward, and would it take, what, two months? I mean, why couldn't we do them simultaneously? So, that brings, that's a great question. I wanna ask the question.
Well, you know, we have a person who can build it, and, you know, I rely on Brian and both, and also Terry Cohn's recommendation that, you know, we go forward with this. You open back up to bidding, you get into dealing, it's a long process as well, and I think probably you're gonna come out with the same answer.
And we heard, even, and Mr. Gaffin put all the proposals together and worked very hard with the contractors, we've heard one point five something, so we're at one point six then, and so now we're at one point eight. So, you know, you think that, you feel then after...
I think it's in the best interest of the community to go ahead and get going on this thing, and this particular construction company can start, he said it could start Monday.
Wow.
I mean, but we gotta negotiate the contract for it.
Exactly. We do not have a contract. If I could call upon Terry Cohn, who is our project manager for this renovation project, to give us your take, your update, if you would, please, sir.
And by the way, Mike Scott just walked in. He is the owner of Scott...
Scott Tucker.
Scott Tucker Construction.
Hello, Mr. Terry Cohn.
Mr. Mayor, we've had a lot of discussions over the last few months, and been back and forth, and the Ed Wilson Company has put a lot of effort into the project, but I think what someone commented on earlier appears that they kinda got to a point and it became a comp bid or complimentary bid, it just seemed too high. The firm of Scott Tucker, Mr. Bill Scott, who is here with us tonight, can speak if you have questions for him, has, like was stated earlier, was the second firm in our selection process originally. They have shown a great deal of interest in helping us through this process and have provided a couple of quotations or bids, analysis, if you will, of the construction cost, and they've also offered a number of potential opportunities for savings, the value engineering, some of those things. They're, a project like this with that kind of over, overage in cost, you have to look at everything. You're not gonna get it all out in one big chunk. There's no silver bullet to take major costs out of a project of this size. It has to be worked on from different angles, and it's cumulative savings across the board. I'm a firm believer in this process that we're suggesting, which is a guaranteed maximum price that the firm will provide to us, and the opportunity then to work towards savings. That's, that's the key part of this thing. If you just put it out to bids on the street, you just don't have any opportunity to work with the contractor. The process that we're suggesting, the contractor becomes a team member with us. He's, he's paid on a fee basis rather than just the margin of the construction. He's more motivated to find savings in the process, and I think that's the key at this point, is to get someone that we can have confidence in to get started, and then look at opportunities for savings. Mr. Scott has shown eagerness, if you will, to help us in this process. He's reacted very quickly on several occasions to answer questions and to provide information for us. So, I'm impressed with his, his action at this point, and I would seriously recommend that we consider the firm of Scott Tucker for this project as a construction manager at risk type of agreement.
Thank you, sir. And if I could ask Bill Scott, would you mind coming up here and we'll barrage you with a few questions? And for the record, I just need you to state your name and your address for the record, if you would, please.
Yes, Bill Scott, 5608 Pershing Avenue, Fort Worth, Texas, 76107.
Thanks, thanks for coming here, sir.
My pleasure.
You know, this is one of these dear-to-heart projects that the community is definitely wanting to see started immediately. In fact, if you could just turn back the clock to January, we really needed it started back then. So, with that of mind, we were hearing from the previous buyboard contractor, we were hoping for a hundred and eighty days. He proposed possibly two-ten. How many days are you putting out there, sir, for completion of the project?
Well, based on the last set of drawings I think we saw, which was around the first of July, I think we're close to seven.
Say again?
Seven months, I believe, based on the last iteration of design. Yes, sir.
All right. And, and one of the other issues that we wanted to put a little bit of teeth into it, a liquidated damages clause. You're familiar with that type of a clause, sir?
Yes, sir.
We initially were thinking somewhere in the neighborhood of a thousand dollars per day, should you run over. Is that something that you would balk at? Should we throw that into the contract, sir?
No, sir.
And bonding, is that an issue for you for this project?
No, sir.
You've done municipal projects in the past, sir?
Yes, sir.
Great. Any other questions for Scott Tucker Group?
Let me say, he has built a theater in El Paso that I didn't, I didn't know El Paso had that kind of theater.
That's a good, good comment. You are familiar with theaters?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's really good.
Beautiful theater. I was just amazed.
Anybody else from the council wanna speak to Mr. Scott?
I was hoping you'd go for two thousand a day, because we really wanna get this done quick. But we'll leave it up to the attorney to put it on you hard. But when you bid this the first time, you're the second bidder, right, or next bidder?
It was a qualifications, please, competitive seal proposal on qualifications, wasn't necessarily bid per se.
So, y'all never gave us a bid before?
We've not had a competitive bid process yet.
You did an estimate for us, though.
What was your estimate?
We've done two or three estimates, I believe.
What was your estimate, the first one? What, at one point four?
I believe on the, that's been almost a year, I think, ago. I think the original budget was a million two, and our original budget and schedule was in compliance with the original request for quotations. I believe it was a million two and three or four months, whatever it was.
Why did it go up so high?
Scope changed.
It's changed.
It's just a couple of changes.
The scope has changed dramatically.
Is there any of that stuff we can take out and bring it back down?
I'm sure there is, yes, sir.
You'd work with us on that?
Be happy to. Been it before.
You got some good ideas?
Yes, sir, I do.
And still make it look as good as we want it?
That's the idea, yes, sir.
The thing is, we are looking for a theater.
Absolutely.
Yeah. By the, by the time we're done, we wanna have a practical working stage.
Mayor, after hearing, after hearing, I'm sorry.
Because what I, what really confuses me, I'm not a contractor, but Brian Gaffin went out and got bids on it, where it is today, with subs local, for like one six, one five, yeah, one five, thank you, thank you, one five. Can you use their subs and do the same thing?
We will, we will certainly solicit.
Because I know a lot of y'all out there don't believe it, but I don't like spending taxpayer money. And I think if we, if we can save every nickel, we need to save it, or go out and rebid.
That would be our approach, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir, for your time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Scott?
The only thing I have to say is, they keep saying, "When are you gonna finish?" So, you're saying seven months, when you start?
Well, we've, we've budgeted the project. We, we did it in-house off the current, or I guess the first of July set of documents. There's an iteration of the design that I believe is coming out as soon as the PAS is complete, I believe that's the case, there is, actually. There's another iteration of the design coming, and that would be the key point where you could incorporate some of this value engineering that the city wants to incorporate, whatever that approved list gets to be, but there'll be some, there'll be some opportunity to whittle on it, but there'll also be some, obviously, some reasons to raise the price. You know, for instance, the, I don't know the particulars, but Mr. Gaffin told me the other day in the lobby, it was an elevator ad, leave a orchestra pit, maybe, those are all things that weren't in our price. But again, our price was an in-house price based on a set of documents and historical unit pricing that we do. Most of the time, it's conceptual estimating, and that schedule is derived off that. We will know for sure when we go out, should we be selected construction manager, put it on the street, public bidding, and we'll firm up everything to it.
You're gonna be the construction manager, too, so we won't need Brian to pay him? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I believe he's the architect of record.
That's correct.
Is it, let me ask the council, is that right, Stuart? George, we would, we don't, we wouldn't have to pay Brian no more money if we hired them?
No, Brian's your architect.
But we already paid him for our architect.
This guy here's your construction company, Brian's your architect, who does the drawings.
Okay, but the drawings are all done.
What if he needs to make a change, though? Like adding a lift?
But he, okay, but is this a, a percent of the job that we'd be paying Brian, or is it...
According to the contract, yes.
Depending on what the final job is, the original that was paid Brian was basically a million dollars.
Okay, but let's say it comes in at a million five?
He gets a portion.
We gotta pay him another ninety thousand.
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Mayor, I got one question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Was the, was the estimate you had there, Mr. Scott, was it, the initial estimate, was it also with the demo, with the demo...
Yes, sir.
Included, I mean, we went in and demoed it now.
The estimate we prepared would've been apples to apples with the design documents that were given to us.
Because initially, Brian's was not with the demo, he was gonna keep a lot of that, so I just wondered how much money we've saved there, if we saved any.
Well, I, I told the folks Friday, I think you saved some money, or I hope you saved some money doing...
I hope we do, too, because we could've had them mowing grass instead of doing that, probably, you know, I mean, we took them out there, had them demoing this thing, and if we just saved, you know, thirty thousand dollars, it wasn't worth it.
I disagree with that.
I don't...
Mayor, I was gonna, I didn't have any more questions, Mr. Tucker. I thank you for your time here in the question.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. We appreciate you.
I wanted to ask you, Mayor, would there be an opportunity if, from what we hear from Mr. Cohn's, and it really refreshed me to hear Mr. Cohn's confidence in this opportunity going forward, so do y'all have an opportunity then to even call a special meeting to get us on a faster start date? Is that a possible?
First, we need to get the final revised drawings, so that the group, Scott Tucker Construction Group can evaluate them, come back with a final number, and then we will be moving forward with that going through our committee, and then the committee will be bringing it forward to council.
Okay, so just, just for the process, to help me and the public as well, and I wanna see if Mr. Scott is, is okay with this, Mr. Tucker. In fact, so as soon as we get those...
It's Scott.
Scott. So, as soon as we get those, those final drawings, and what is the expectation? What's the date on that?
Well, my expectation is to negotiate and to work with Brian as well as Terry, to negotiate a proposed contract to bring back to the next meeting, which is on the eighteenth, and then hopefully for him to start work on October first.
Awesome, so there you go. We're looking at a start date right now unless something goes...
Is that, you know, we talked about that. You have a fast track, right?
We're, there's, the delivery methodology could be whatever one wanted. We had pitched a, an initial GMP of something the Corps of Engineers uses, an IGMP, that's established on a number, and then we're, that will let us probably start some foundation work, we hope, and while that's going on, we could be bidding, publicly bidding the process, and then come up with a final GMP based on that project. It allows you to start earlier.
When you say Brian would have the drawings back, y'all waiting?
Well, we're still working, but during the next two weeks, I'm hoping that Brian, I mean, Brian's here, we can ask him, but, you know, I'm hoping to get this thing so I can bring you a contract in the next meeting and discuss it. Brian, are you here?
Mr. Gaffin, invite you up here to the podium, if you would, please, sir.
Brian Gaffin, the plans are complete. They are, the talk that we're talking about is, is all going to come out in addendum format. It'll be the second addendum that is attached to the plan. So, the plans in the document sheets that you see, those are one package, and there's one addendum attached to that. There will be a second addendum that addresses the issues as far as the Texas accessibility standards and their requirement of a lift to the second level.
Are the detailed evaluation of the orchestra pit included in your addendum as well?
I don't know anything about the orchestra, yeah.
Really?
As I mentioned two weeks ago, I don't know anything about it.
Yeah, we talked about it.
I, I, I'm just amazed that you can't recall that we spoke of an orchestra pit, but...
We spoke about it, but there not was, I mean, there was, there was a lot of talk, but there was not any conclusion, and, and, so there was never any conclusion, and that's what's been the concern all the time. We got too many people on this situation who, it's my opinion, don't, you know, we need to let the professionals get involved with this and move forward, because this project has expanded to a point where it's cost us some money. Can we do without some of these things? Yes. Can we have a great Opera House? Yes. And in fact, Brian had a situation before us, if you wanna call it orchestra pit, I think we referred to it, or don't. They wanted something deeper and wider, all that, would cost a lot more money. Come on, we, let's get it right.
But, but...
Let's make it where it's, where it's reasonable, please.
Councilman Tyra, one thing you're trying to do in your cutting down of the cost is you evaluate it from the best wish scenario, and the best wish was to have an orchestra pit of a certain design, a certain plan, and see what that cost you, so that you can go forward. You can always take it out of the drawing. You can't put it in after the fact. You wanna have a bid that comes forward showing the real life version of it, and then if you need to, you skew it back some, but you can't go the opposite direction, once you've put it out to bid.
And I, I think that's very fair said, and I appreciate you saying that. You, in fact, would like to see a bigger, better orchestra pit. You did a good job explaining why this other one was deficient, and so if, in fact, this council or the committee, somebody gives that authority to Brian, I'm sure he'd be glad for us to pay him to build a bigger and deeper orchestra pit. But I'm saying, we gotta have to, somewhere we gotta say, "Okay, let's take a deep breath, give it over to Mr. Cohn, these folks, let them get with it and get this value engineering, and let's get it done." That's all I'm saying, but thank you.
I don't think that the mayor's saying to go bill it, but we did discuss it in the back room, and I think it may be a misunderstanding between us, you, Brian, or Mr. Cohn's, or maybe Mitch, yeah, maybe Mitch, but...
It could've been me.
I do think...
It could've been me.
But I do think we want it on there just to see what it costs, if we, like you said, if it's something too expensive, we may wanna take it off. But regardless, when's the plan's gonna be ready? That's what I was asking.
They're ready.
They're ready now?
They've been ready.
So, he can go get the bids right now?
There is no question.
Except they don't have an orchestra pit.
They don't have the one you want, Mayor.
I understand.
Exactly. They don't, they have, they have a pit that is three feet deep, okay? And I think that I've heard you say that you want it to be five or six feet deep with a, with a, you know, so somebody tell me how deep they want the orchestra pit.
Six feet.
I'll have the structural engineer...
I'm, I'm saying six. If I was standing there with an upright base, I sure don't want it to be in my... If I was standing there with an upright base, I sure don't want it to be in my face in the orchestra pit.
Is this something you and Terry can work out, and Wayne, they're on that committee?
Oh, I absolutely would love to, yes. I just want a clear directive is all I want.
Amen.
From somebody.
Wayne, you and Terry can...
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Mr. Scott, we appreciate you. All right, it'll run its course. You've heard that it'll try to get back before council for approval of a contract at the next meeting. So there's no action being taken on agenda number five at this time. Moves us on to item number six, considering and accept the 2012 Lambert Branch Park Preservation Site Master Plan and the Preservation Plan for Historic Structures, prepared by the Quimby McCoy Preservation Architecture LLP in Dallas, Texas. And it's my understanding that we have Parks Board President Jean Kate here. Hello, Ms. Kate. And we have Preserve Granbury representative, I see Diane, I see Mary Saltirelli, I see... Who else? I see Claudia Southern. We... What... And Judith? Oh, and we have Parks Board out there, I'm sorry. I don't mean to believe anybody out, but they're very well representative, the Parks Board, Preserve Granbury. They've brought this item up several times. They've asked for public support, public input, over a period of time that has dated back to quite some time. On 4/11, 5/9, 7/11, there were discussions held about this, even on 8/11 of 2011. A public hearing was held on 9/12 of 2011, and we had another meeting on 7/9 of 2012. So this issue is coming back up before the council to accept this. I understand we've got Ms. Quimby here as well.
Yes, I'm Marcel Quimby with Quimby with Preservation Architecture.
Marcel Quimby, thank you very much for being here, Marcel.
Thank you.
And you have a little slideshow presentation, a PowerPoint presentation, I believe?
I do.
All right.
It's probably not as exciting as some of the previous discussion we've had this evening, but I'll try.
We'll try not to sleep during this, I'm sure it'll be intriguing.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I assume that everybody can see in front of them. I'm just excited to be here today. We've been working on this project for a little bit over a year, and we're pleased to have completed the master plan process and be, you know, delighted to present that to you today. I'd like to note that this has been a joint effort between Granbury Parks and Recreation Board, and also Preserve Granbury, and both groups have been a delight to work with. Just for some background... Am I not doing it right? Just for some background, Lambert Branch Park is one of the city's oldest parks. It is a site of the first light and power plant, which began operation in 1903, so that's over 100 years old. There are currently four historic buildings at the park, the light building, as well as three others that have been moved in. So it really is, offers a unique opportunity to showcase Granbury's history, both commercial and residential. Oops, wrong way, sorry. Definition of a master plan, just to give everybody an idea of what it is, this master plan comprises, it's an overall, it provides a plan for the overall utilization of a particular site, Lambert Branch Park, including allocation for uses, strategic placement, and functional relationships with respect to the surrounding context. Purpose, the specific purpose for the Lambert Branch Master Plan was to explore opportunities for the park's development that address three. Early on in the discussion about the master plan, we decided we addressed and had much discussion about what did we want to focus on in future for the master plan, and there was three things. One is the park as a historic area, the park's natural environment, it's, you know, a fabulous location on Lambert Branch. It, you know, looks into the lake, you know, it's kind of like an access part to the lake, and it's one of the few parks I've ever worked on with actually water access, where you could get out and do things in the water. And as well, it's a neighborhood park, so offering recreational opportunities consistent with a neighborhood park while maximizing the existing green open spaces were really important. So those were the three big components that the park master plan strive to address as we continue through the process. I'd like to spend a little bit of time about methodology. This is just, and I'm not going to sit here and read everything for you, but we went through a process of meeting with public meeting, meeting with staff, meeting with the park board. We prepared three different options for the master plan, we presented those to the park and recreation board. They selected one, we refined that, and the end master plan is the document that you guys have had for review. Wanted to spend a couple of minutes about what a master plan does. It provides a roadmap for the park. It's kind of the vision of, you know, in a perfect world, this is, you know, what the park wants to provide. It's a flexible document that, and most master plans are evaluated and modified as the community desires. And it provides the community, you know, and the city with information to choose for their projects and address funding. There is more detail in the written master plan that talks about each one of these features that we decided to include in the master plan. What a master plan does not do is mandate that you do everything that's in the master plan. Again, it's a roadmap, if you choose to follow a certain route, that's great. If you choose to, you know, not do things that are in the master plan, or you decide to, you know, hey, there's something bigger and better we want to do in 10 years, that's fine. You know, it's not cast in stone. It, you know, like I said, it doesn't require the city to complete individual projects, and it doesn't get into the, you know, the nitty gritty operational issues such as, you know, hours of the park, sound levels. Again, you know, most parks have rules about what you can and cannot do. You know, we see Lambert Branch Park needing specific rules because there's access to water. There's other features in the park, there's historic buildings, you're going to have to think about who uses those, you know, how they're used, how the open spaces around the historic buildings are used, how the open spaces in the middle of the park is used, and that may be different from a normal neighborhood park. And a master plan does not strive to address those. I mean, we could write a telephone book full of options, how you would manage that, and that really should be, you know, mandated by the park department and the community as a collaborative effort. We've had, like you had mentioned, there were a couple of public meetings. The first big one was September 12, almost a year ago, where we presented an evaluation of the park and addressed, you know, our findings of the natural and historic amenities. We solicited input and comments from the participants, and I don't remember how many we had. It was like 50 or 60 or 70 people there, it was a pretty full room. The immediate neighbors were, had letters delivered to Lambert Branch townhouses, and some of the streets on, some of the houses on Brazos Street notified them, as well as there was an article in the paper, you know, and other ways to communicate with the folks, you know, the residents and interested parties, which has probably contributed to the big attendance we had at the meeting. We've had two parks and meetings with Parks and Recreation Board. The first one that we presented four master plan options. We selected, you know, two at the end of that meeting. We came back on March 12 with two preferred options, two options, and the board selected one, and that's what's in the document today. And the master plan, wow, we have lost color. That should be a green slide looking just like this. Sorry. That's the master plan, the area outlined in green, or the yellow circle essentially defines, you know, the, you know, the boundaries of the park. You can see, you know, it follows the contours of the lake, and then, you know, there's a walkway that connects along the branch itself back to City Hall. A hike and bike trail will be continuing across the branch to connect to the southeast, southwest corner of the park when it's completed. And you can see its relationship to Landen Center and then downtown, and the county square is just off the lower left-hand corner of the park plan. This is the existing zones that we found were strong and really comprise the backbone of the park, you know, the proposed master plan. The large green area shows the open space, that's very important. The red circles at the top are the historic zones of commercial buildings. The area to the left of the open space are where the new residential buildings have been moved in. The park identifies two locations for additional move-ins of orphaned historic buildings. And then the blue zones are places for, you know, interaction with the waterfront zones. There is a trail, I'm going to move over here. Ten of that trail, it would be decomposed granite, gravel, something, you know, the area that is adjacent to the water would be kind of a quiet zone, you know, a place where you can take a nice walk along the water's edge. There's some concrete, you know, the trails, you know, that go from top to bottom, and around the historic area, those would be hard surface. So we're trying to separate, you know, kind of active areas for more passive areas and quiet areas along the waterfront. Existing amenities at the park, I'm sure everybody's familiar with those, and the desired features at the park through a series of meetings, discussions with staff, discussions with Preserve Granbury, and also comments from the public meeting, these are the desired features that we're on a high priority as, you know, the historic park continues to showcase Granbury's history. Special activities at the Neely House, the small outdoor stage can happen, opportunities for those are provided. Fishing, canoeing, and kayaking along the edge, potentially, we've talked about bicycle rentals, you know, as the park is adjacent to and actually ties into the bike trail. That'd be a great location for something like that. It could be a permanent venue for Cadillac tour, as well as the engine show, which happens there every year. New activities relate, possible new activities that relate to Granbury's historic character can include a farmer's market, community garden, you know, horseshoe park, horseshoe area, you know, and other traditional activities that really relate to the historic buildings. And continued and improved pedestrian connection to the square was very important. The features include some of those things we've just talked about. The walking trail extends from the light plant down to the south edge of the park. There is two additional locations for relocated historic homes. Again, we want to maximize and keep the open and natural spaces. We've talked about active and passive zones between the water's edge and more inboard area. Parking, there's a new parking lot to the north behind the power, behind the light plant, and also we're showing head-in parking at Brazos Street. And again, there's the master plan in its entirety. And we've, you know, I'm showing here and with the diagrams, just the same zones that we had talked about before, the waterfront zones, the green space, the historic areas. We've talked about, the master plan includes some ideas on amenities. We've talked about the walking trail, interpretive signage, you know, with the historic features and the historic character of the site and a history, you know, a century of history. It's a great opportunity for interpretive signage, let people know, you know, a little bit about Granbury's history. It needs a playground, there was a playground there, it's been removed, it's a neighborhood park, that's part of being a neighborhood park. Boat dock, we're proposing the boat dock be for non-motorized craft, canoes, kayaks, things like that. And again, you know, we also suggested it have a dynamic, interesting sign to let people know where you are and how to get there from downtown, because it's kind of around the corner right now. In addition to the master plan, there was a second document we presented, we provided, and it was a preservation plan where we evaluated the four historic buildings, assessed their condition, gave some, did as-built drawings for them, we've got those on a CAD disc for Mary and the city for your future use. We documented the history and development, and we also came up with options for how they could be used and how, what their restoration or their preservation could be, you know, like I said, in conjunction with appropriate uses. And we look forward to those being, you know, stabilized and restored, they're all cute little buildings. One of the things we were asked to do is funding opportunities, and one of the things we want to stress is that, you know, for projects like this, nobody's got enough money. There's very few cities that have got enough money to just go and do a park from scratch. Most of developments of public facilities are partnership and collaborative efforts. You've got Preserve Granbury in town, they've been a partner so far, I know they'll continue to be so. The concept of a Friends of Lambert Branch Park, which would be a new organization specifically to improve the park, would be a great idea if that can be encouraged to be formed. Many times, Friends of organizations are formed by people that are just really interested in a particular area. They've got, you know, neighbors, businesses that are local that can contribute and play a part of that. So, you know, whatever those partnerships need to be, that's something that I'd like to, you know, encourage you guys to think about. There should be, funding solicited, funding solicitation should be targeted. We see that as the best bet to make projects happen. You know, there's certain foundations and groups you want to go to to request funding for historic buildings and sites. Nature areas, there's, you know, state park and recreation nonprofits and foundations that have funding available for projects along those lines. I know the city park department, you know, park and recreation department has utilized those sources before. Signage and education, there's different groups that are interested in preserving, you know, providing education facilities and amenities at public spaces. You know, the light plant, you know, somebody, you know, a company or energy company associated with energy, you know, might be great. You know, there might be several of them that would be great resources to go talk to about helping to provide funding for, you know, making improvements in rehabilitation and getting some of the equipment up and running at the light plant. That's, you know, I've worked on a lot of empty buildings, industrial buildings. I've never worked on one that has got quite as much of the historic machinery that's operational by the flywheelers here. That's really a remarkable building, just remarkable. There are some examples of other nonprofit organizations that do similar work is there's in Dallas, where I live, there's a Friends of Fair Park, and all they focus on is Fair Park. And they have, one of the things that they have done is, when times were a little bit better, granted, they were able to get hundreds of thousands of dollars on a regular basis from the agriculture department from the state of Texas for improvements in the agriculture buildings at Fair Park. You know, and that has paid for the rehabilitation of several buildings at Fair Park. So thinking outside the box, there's also a Granbury Heritage Foundation that is a partner with the city... I'm sorry, Grapevine Heritage Foundation, that's a partner with the city of Grapevine, that helps put on Main Street Days, and then the monies that are raised, they put back into preservation activities for Grapevine. So you'll find that there's a number of, you know, particular Friends of and preservation groups, you know, that can... You know, you can look to as examples of how they work and how they go after funding. And that concludes my presentation, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Yes, I'd like to be first, if possible. First of all, what's the city, what are you going to do with the water department storage tank we have down there? And the walk you have is going to be going right back there behind it, and it's secured, it's secured now. Are you going to make that secure, or what are you going to do with that?
What the plan shows is, yes, some of those buildings have to remain secure. What the plan shows is actually taking that fence that's around the tanks and some of those other pieces of equipment out there and pulling it in, making it as tight as possible. There's a couple of buildings that are going to need to be replaced, you know, in the, I don't want to say the near future, but in the future, and it would be nice if they would be replaced, you know, closer in to behind the light plant so the secure area could be minimized. Right now...
That's where they actually blend the water, that several wells go in.
I understand that, and we understand that there's a need to have that secure. But I think the fence, my understanding is that fence needs to be within like 10 or 15 feet of the edge of the buildings, of the equipment that it protects, and right now, it's bigger than that. So, yes, we understand that those are things that still need to happen, but as change is made, if we can consolidate that secure equipment closer to where the tanks are and minimize, you know, the area that needs to be contained, that would be, that would work. you know, the area that needs to be contained, that would be, that would work.
Any other questions for Ms. Quimby?
Could you point out on that, where your parking lots and your restrooms were gonna be? I didn't see that on there.
Oh, sure, sure. There's a parking lot right here, right now there's a travel area in the north of the light plant, and also the parking, you can show the parking here, and parking here that we do, have it, kind of, many now, uh, we show, right in, ten in parking right here, and that report, and I think that's about three, nine spaces, it's not enough, it's not easy now, but we're also showing, we have parking on the street such that, because the parking is coming out, so if the parking is free, you're not having to go behind cars, cars are protected, uh, you're, and we, we, a lot of these girl parking spaces, and we're showing new restrooms.
So your total parking is estimated at what, I mean, how much parking space do you think you're gonna have there?
Probably about thirty.
About thirty?
Well, thirty off-street, and probably another fifty off-street.
I just checked with the mayor, and I believe that partly across the street, across that street, along with the city.
There's a little triangle.
Railroad, yes, there's.
Right, adjacent to the railroad track.
Oh, right here?
Yes.
We've actually talked about that being kept as grass and then used as overflow parking for big events. Because I think the parking we're showing here is fine for a typical weekend, and I, you know, I don't think anybody's in favor of parking with, you know, just covering with concrete that you don't need to. But this area would be great for overflow parking, for when you actually have events there. I know that, you know, the big event there at the park right now is the engine show.
Yes.
And, you know, that would, and I think people park on that now, and certainly, if there's other events that have that much people, you know, need that many parking spaces, that would be a great location for those.
Last question, and people expect this from me, is what are you gonna do with the railroad car?
We've, we have decided, we love the railroad car, we think the railroad car ought to be near a railroad. We're actually suggesting that it be moved closer to where the railway station is.
It can be done by a house mover, because I've had it moved three times.
(laughing) I understand, I understand. But it needs to be moved soon. It is, it is not, you know, it's kind of like me, it's showing its age.
Any other questions?
Well, I got a question to Scott, concerning the parking lots to go on with that, is there, is there a restriction on a, you know, facility like this for parking?
This is the first time that I've seen this schematic, so...
Well, I mean, that's why I'm asking this question, are they gonna be hit with something that, hey, we don't have ample enough parking for a facility this big? Is there restrictions for something like this?
Not that I...
Usually, there's not for parking, for public parks.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
I'm just asking in your defense, because we don't...
Well, there's gonna be a lot more parking there than there is now, other than how it's set up now.
Right.
Usually now they park in the middle of the grass and all over the park, there'll be actually more parking, once it's developed than we actually have today.
Right.
We don't have any parking really now.
And we're trying to get parking in real parking spaces, so they're safe, you know, because, and controlled. I mean, you know, one of the things is when you enlarge, you know, when you improve parks, you've got more kids there. You really want to have a clear definition of where the park is and where parking is for the kids' safety.
The parking that's near the Neely House right now, are you not gonna utilize that?
No. What we would actually do is use, if you're having a, an equipped ride, they're giving you the service, we're proposing a couple of accessible parking spaces there, so when you have a parent, you know, somebody, you know, who's married, or who's getting the parking rights authorized, somebody could drive down there, you know, drop off whoever needs to be dropped off in a wheelchair, and even park there. Caterers could go there, furniture people could go there and deliver things, but after the event, that would then revert back to just a wide sidewalk.
And one of the other areas for overflow parking is the train depot. It's a little walk down to that part, but there is some parking available there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Quimby.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure to work with the city and Preserve Granbury on the...
And I do want to give special thanks to Preserve Granbury, thank you for your input and leadership on this, along with our Parks Board. And Claudia Southern, Diane Locke, Carol Langley, Cindy Peters, Mary Saltirelli, thank you very much for being here, appreciate that. And our Parks Board, Julia Pennell, Barbara Boozer, Joni Snyder, Kay Wazaluski, Kathy Cuban, Joe Parker, Bev Groves, and Jean Kate, our chairperson, thank you very much.[916.01][916.01](applause) At this time, I entertain a motion to accept the 2012 Lambert Branch Park Preservation Site Master Plan, along with the Preservation Plan for Historic Structures as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Tyra, a second by Mr. Perkel. Any discussion regarding it?
Yes, I have a comment. In this year's budget, I was able to ask Preserve Granbury and the Parks Board and Ms. Quimby to prepare a prioritization of items to be done. The first thing is to stabilize the historic properties that are in there, the buildings that have been moved there, in terms of building foundations and making sure they've got good roofing on them, and that money is in the current year budget for doing that.
Right, that's in the fiscal year 2012-2013 budget.
Just approved.
Yeah, we just passed that one. So we have a motion on the floor, all in favor of accepting the Lambert Branch Park Preservation Site Master Plan, along with the Preservation Plan for Historic Structures, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries.[992.51][992.51](applause) We're gonna veer away from the agenda for a little bit. At this time, I now declare that Granbury City Council has convened into open session and that all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551.071, consultation with the attorney. We'll be back in a few minutes.
So moved.
We're gonna open a public hearing for a final plat regarding a request of Harold Price, the final plat of 4.969 acre portion of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 through 3, block 1 of the Price Young addition, and consider and approve said final plat. This property is located approximately 800 feet west of the intersection of Highway 377 West and Holmes Drive. The applicant came to us prior to this time with a preliminary plat which showed three lots along the highway frontage. It has now been replatted for final approval as a single lot of record, decreasing the lot density. It has gone before the planning and zoning, and they heard the request, they approved some variances. This does still contain the 36-foot easement, which gives you access to Highway 377, which has also been approved by Texas DOT. And as a result of that 35-foot street frontage easement variance that was requested at the last time, it allows for access to a lot of record that we saw on a previous time of Lot 4 and 5, and that's to be developed at a later date. Any other input that we've got before us, Scott?
That's about it, Mayor. I will add that the city engineers looked at stormwater runoff and has approved the easement width for drainage that crosses, bisects the property from east to west, also looked at the culvert size along 377. As you mentioned, it's gone from three lots to one lot due to the fact that the variances were approved to allow for septic and water, and the county has a three-acre minimum threshold standard, so that's why we're going to the, to the single lot.
So the county basically led us to this downsizing and decreasing of the lot.
The county is kind of forcing the hand to go from three lots to meet the acreage threshold to allow for the septic system to be permitted there.
All right, well, this is the public hearing, this is your chance to speak on this matter. At this time, we'll close the public hearing. City council members, what we have before us is we have the request to final plat, 4.969 acre portion of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 through 3, block, should that be as Lot 1, as opposed to lots 1 through 3?
It's actually Lot 1, now Block 1.
As Lot 1, Block 1 of the Price Young addition, and consider and approve said final plat, along with its list of variances. Entertain a motion to do so, please.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Allen, needs a second, please.
Take it.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. Any further discussion regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. At this time, I now declare the Granbury City Council is convened into open session and that all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney. At this time, we're going to reconvene back into open session.
Mayor, I have a motion concerning the item that we spoke about. I move that in the matter of Jay Mills versus City of Granbury, that we authorize the city manager to go out for bids on that project, so we can know our real damages.
Requires a second, we have a motion and a second. A motion by Mr. Tyra, a second by Mr. Allen, to authorize the city manager to go out for bids on the project under, how is that project actually named? The Boardwalk and Fishing Pier Project.
For the purpose of, purpose of...
We'll just say...
Establishing the real cost or the purpose of damages.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Tyra to authorize the city manager to go forward with bid process to establish the cost of construction for the Boardwalk and Fishing Pier. Any discussion?
Mayor, can we put a timeframe on that within a month, say?
Let me ask if he's willing to amend that to give a timeframe.
I don't want to give staff any opportunity to not bring back bids for this, so we can know the real cost to finish this project. Alls I've heard is a talk for the last several years, so no, I don't want to give any wiggle room. When they come back to us, let's have bids in hand and get it done.
All right.
If it takes a month, and we've been told that they can get it done in a month, so that's...
He said he doesn't want to put in a timeframe.
He's gonna run the bid process, it was my estimate of a month, do you agree with the month?
Well, you'll have to advertise two weeks, have a bid opening, and we may get it in the month, get it to the next council meeting. You have to advertise two weeks.
If we get it, if we get it in the October meeting, latter, last meeting in October, that'd be great. If not, you know, we understand you are working on it diligently.
Yeah, we'll start tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we'll get it ready to go to bid. My question is, the same plans, or are we gonna change anything?
No, the same plan.
Same thing, same thing.
Okay.
Move forward. Thank you, Keith.
Yes, sir, Mr. Parsons, you want to speak?
There's a settlement offer on the table from Jay Mills regarding this project, and as I understand it, it is our outside council's opinion that we should probably accept that offer for settlement, so I'll be opposed to any change in that.
Any other discussion regarding this item?
Because we have pending litigation, I'm not gonna even rebuttal Mr. Parsons' comments at this time, except just let's get these bids done so we can move forward.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the city manager to move forward with bid process for the boat dock and fishing pier. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Please note for the record that Councilman Perkel and Councilman Parsons voted in the nay. Motion does pass, though. All right, we are back in session and moving on to item number seven or eight?
Eight.
Eight, thank you. This time, we'll open a public hearing regarding a request of Gaffin Properties LLC to final plat a 2.298 acre tract of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 and 2, block 1 of the Gaffin addition. And consider and approve said final plat. This property is located southwest of the intersection of South Morgan Street and Spring Street. Folks, if you remember, we saw a preliminary plat come before city council during a prior council meeting, and nothing has changed that I can see, Scott. Has anything changed? Variances are still the same as requested, nothing seems to be any different than what we saw before, was there, sir?
Mayor, the final plat's consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved by council. The variances were approved at that time, so this final plat has no variances tied to it. The requisite notes that we discussed at the preliminary plat about the sidewalks being constructed at the time for development on Lot 2, as well as stormwater being approved by our city engineer prior to development, all those notes are on the plat. That being said, P&amp;Z and city staff recommended approval as presented.
Thank you, sir. Anybody from the public want to speak regarding this public hearing? Ah, Mr. Gaffin. I haven't closed it yet.
Mayor and council, thank you for hopefully approving that plat. It's a special piece of property. Obviously, the historic nature of that property is, I have no intentions of compromising the additional 35,000 square feet that would surround the historical property there currently. I did notice, though, that when you were talking about item 4 on the agenda, that there was gonna be a double pole sign located on that property someplace. And I'd just like to make mention that there are lots of entities either down 144 or back towards the squarey the 1, but I can imagine only what it might say, and that it might point down to the left or towards Lynn Rose and say Happy Hill Farm, Swingers Club, Baptist Church. So, I mean, my point is, is that I think that we need to be sympathetic in who's going to actually govern what's on those signs. And since it is actually going to be on that property, I'm concerned about, not only for mine, but I'm concerned about the advertisements would actually go on every sign.
Are, that's not what we have before us, though.
Oh, okay.
We're back to a public hearing on this piece of property. I wish you had a spoke regarding that during that particular section.
There wasn't, there wasn't a chance to do that, Mayor, but I, I mean, I just...
We had open mic tonight, it would have been availed to you during open mic.
I apologize.
Anything else, sir?
Nope.
All right, council members, we're going to close this public hearing at this time. And council members, we have a request for approval of a final plat, entertain a motion to approve a final plat of a 2.298 acre tract of the Mylum County School Land Survey, abstract number 348, as lots 1 and 2, block 1 of the Gaffin addition. Entertain a motion, please.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Parsons.
Take it.
Second by Councilman Hewlett. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor of approving the final plat, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Down to item number nine. Open a public hearing regarding a request of Arrow Feed and Ranch to rezone 2031 East Highway 377, being a 3.153 acre tract of the Martin Setser Survey, abstract number 502, from interim holding to heavy commercial. And consider and approve an ordinance providing for said rezoning. We'll also be opening a public hearing simultaneously for item number 10, regarding a request of Arrow Feed and Ranch for a specific use permit to allow outdoor storage on the property. It's located at 2031 East Highway 377, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for said SUP. So with that being said, Scott, one of the things that I understand about this whole process was this is the Arrow Feed and Ranch store, it's out on 377, it... process was this is the Arrow Feed and Ranch store is out on 377. It has been an interim holding since it was taken in by the city. Is that correct, sir?
That's correct, Mayor.
And, and now they're moving forward with an expansion of the building of some 337 square feet expansion. It's a very small little add-on to the building, but it sparked this issue to come before us, both nine and 10. And can you give us some more update? I noticed they, did they also go to the ZBA regarding some of this as well?
That's correct, Mayor. What prompted this request in, in essence, was a small add-on built to the facility, roughly 337 square foot add-on that's located to the east of the property. It was done so without a permit. We informed the property owner at the time that they needed to process the applications in, in, in a manner consistent with our adopted ordinances and policies. As a side note, the add-on wasn't built with our masonry requirement that's, that's adopted in our zoning ordinance. So the applicant did go through the zoning board adjustment process first to get a exception to the masonry standards for the built facility. The ZBA did approve the exception as presented. They also approved variance to the landscaping standards for expansions within the zoning district. That being said, that gave them the allowance to actually move the request to a conforming status. As you mentioned, it's, it's zone interim holding. Now that they've got the variances and exceptions applied by the board of adjustment, they can actually get the zoning district right in conformance with the proposal or the built facility that, that's there currently on the ground. The zoning ordinance requires for outside activity like this, opens, open and closed storage, that they be located in a heavy commercial zone, zoning district with a specific use permit to allow for the storage. And that's what they're proposing to do. You can see that the site is bounded in yellow, is bordered by heavy commercial to the east and west. It's consistent with our comprehensive plan. So, long story short, that's what this request is about. It's not the variances which were granted by council. Basically, it's to allow for them to be conforming now, once the variances were granted by the ZBA, to allow them to operate in a conforming status within the heavy commercial zone district under an SUP.
Mayor, I wanted to ask if there's any way we could have the, conduct a public hearing on nine and 10 at the same time, since it's a small.
We already are, sir.
So you're doing them both at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You probably slept through that part. But yeah, we, we have opened both nine and 10 at simultaneous.
Because there was, there was a lot of talk on this when it went to zoning board adjustment, and I've driven past there. I mean, it looks great. It's, it's all in the back, so I move that we approve this.
I, I haven't even gone through all the process yet, sir.
Are you still, is there?
Yeah, the, the public hearing is still open, so.
I thought I'm talking to us. I didn't know if you were talking to Mayor.
No, we were getting our staff report at this point, and then we're going to go to hear from the public, and then we'll come back and deliberate.
Thank you.
All right. So, Scott, just, just to clarify, did, did they circumvent any process?
Once, once we notified them that the, the building had commenced without the permit, they basically, within the next public hearing rotation, agreed to file the applications to go before the ZBA. They couldn't file their zoning and their SUP until the ZBA had approved in the affirmative, the, the variance and the exception in order to allow for the consideration of the zoning and the SUP to be before you. I do want to make mention that we do have two letters of support that's in your agenda packet as well for the zoning and SUP request.
All right. Any, any other questions for staff regarding this right now?
About one, Scott. And that was, you said you had two letters.
Yes.
I may be blind up here, but old Marion, I know Marionville, but both, theirs is not checked either way.
You're not blind, that's right.
Sir?
They, they actually showed up at the hearing at P&amp;Z, and they mentioned at the P&amp;Z that they were in support of it. So we took note of it that they didn't answer to the affirmative or to the negative on their application, but they did convey to us at the hearing and at the ZBA hearing as well that they were in support of it.
No, no problem. The other question is.
Can, can I get you to lean into that microphone?
Testing.
Oh, yeah, that works so much better.
That was, that was. One other question. They're, they're saying to place equipment out there, I believe I read that right. Were they going to put any equip, oh, wait a minute. We're going heavy commercial, so does that mean they could put equipment out there for storage?
The, the SUP is for the contractors or the storage yard. So in essence, what they're doing is trying to capture the facility as it stands with the additional 337 square foot and the outside activity as it's, it's like taking a snapshot of what is being operate, operating it now.
Yeah, because I knew they had some problems or something. You were telling me with the storage buildings or something, the city was only about. So that, will, will this take care of that?
The, the storage building that the city approached them on is the 337, to my knowledge, the 337 square foot expansion that was done without the permit that's on the upper left-hand corner of the slide.
But like they got storage now, he can continue doing that.
He, he could continue, irrespective of how this case flashes out to the positive or negative, he's still considered grandfather nonconforming. So he can, he can go as grandfather nonconforming if it doesn't work out, if it does get, get approved as presented, then basically we're taking a snapshot of what he has, how he's operating, existing, and, and we'll capture that for the approval.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? One thing I want to make clear, though, because this was passed by the ZBA allowing the piece of property to not conform to the stone and masonry requirement. Am I right in the fact that, say, they go out of business, another business buys the property on that piece of land, they do not have to conform either? Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. The, the.
Just clarification for everybody to understand that because there was a ZBA ruling, it, it sort of basically rolls with the property. It doesn't matter if somebody else buys it or not, they don't have to conform. Unless the building was demolished and, and, in that case, you would have to go back and deal with the masonry. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor. The, the ZBA made a point, just in case it is demolished or leveled, they would have to comply with our standards or expanded.
Right.
But in essence, the exception is tied to the building as it is.
As it is. Thank you. Anybody out in the public want to speak regarding this item? We're going to close the public hearing portion of items nine and 10. This time, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve the Arrow Feed Ranch to rezone 2031 East Highway 377, being a 3.153 acre tract of the Martin Setzer Survey Abstract Number 502, from minimum holding to heavy commercial.
All right, we have a motion. Needs a second, please.
Take it.
I'll give the second to my right, but I didn't know who that was. Was that you, Mr. Allen? Second to Mr. Allen. Any other discussion regarding the public hearing of the rezoning issue? We have rezoning of, as you heard, 2031 East Highway 377 from interim holding to heavy commercial. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carries. This time, we'll entertain a motion regarding the SUP. We have an SUP request from Arrow Feed and Ranch to allow outdoor storage on the property located at 2031 East Highway 377. Scott, I noticed there is no timeframe entered on this whatsoever. That's not out of the ordinary by any means, is it, sir?
I, I believe it would be consistent with this application. They're already kind of captured as a nonconformity with the materials that are out there. So this basically documents, takes a snapshot, as we discussed earlier, and kind of rolls it into the SUP.
All right, thank you. And so without being heard, I entertain a motion to approve an SUP as submitted and an ordinance providing for said SUP.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Hewlett, a second by Mr. Perkel. Any discussion regarding this SUP?
I have one question. You're saying there's not a time limit on the SUP?
That's correct.
I don't never remember that ever happening before with us.
Now, again, this is a little bit of unusual circumstances. We've had new businesses coming in with outside merchandise display, for example, where they're migrating merchandise for the first time along the streetscape. But again, this, this is one where if council doesn't pass the SUP, they're considered, considered a nonconformity, and they can have the stuff out there anyway. So it's not like we're imposing anything additional beyond what the grandfather's status already allows them to have.
They were new, so we had to do that.
That's right.
Yes.
That's, that's the distinction.
Just in case somebody asks.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
We have a motion. We have a second of approval of an SUP permit along with its accompanying ordinance for Arrow Feed and Ranch located at 2031 East Highway 377. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 10, open a public hearing regarding a request of SNB Real Estate Investments LP and Old Granberry Road Church of Christ Incorporated to preliminary plat a 6.748 acre tract of the WG Terrell Survey Abstract Number 562 as lots one through 25, block one of the Old Granberry Villa Edition. And consider and approve said preliminary plat. Property is located at 4219 Old Granberry Road. Gentlemen, I do want to let you know that back in 2007, a preliminary plat very similar to this one was approved and passed through city council. However, there's a timeframe of six months within which to develop a final plat. And at this time, the applicant is requesting us to approve the preliminary plat a second time so that he can move forward with the project and present a final plat within a six-month timeframe. Anything we need to know? I noticed it has a base district of townhomes, Scott. Anything else that we should know? You might have to switch bikes. Maybe your battery's gone dead.
We basically have a plat that needs resuscitating because it's since expired. The base zoning district of townhomes is still intact. You can see on the lower right-hand corner, the end product that's being proposed. In essence, it's a, it's a duplex-type facility with a property line down the common wall. We have two variances associated with this. We have a variance to 39 and 45 regarding Santeri Sewer to not extend a eight-inch sewer along, which would be the north to west along Old Granberry Road extension. In essence, everything's going to drain to the south where our existing infrastructure is. And then we have a variance to 33E, utility easements, not to locate a five-foot utility easement along the side lot lines where there's a common wall. There'll be the utility easements where the open space is. Again, it's the exact same plat, exact same variances that we saw in 2007. If this is approved, then we'll get engineering plans sent back to our city engineer for review. Both P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval as presented.
And the, as for the sewer main, there will be some sort of notation on the final plat regarding should the occurrence happen at a later date?
If the council wants to go ahead and put that notation on this preliminary plat saying that that expectation is there on the final, you can certainly do that. You can do a partial approval of the variance, saying that the variance is approved, provided that the note's on for the Old Granberry Road extension.
All right. So gentlemen, at this time, what we're talking about is we have a preliminary plat before us. And anybody on the public, out there in the public, want to speak regarding this item? We'll close the public hearing portion of this. Council members, we have a preliminary plat before us regarding the Old Granberry Road location. This is going to be a preliminary plat of a 6.748 acre tract of the WG Terrell Survey Abstract Number 562 as lots one through 25, block one of the Old Granberry Villa Edition. And along with its list of variances, the property is located at 4219 Old Granberry Road. Entertain a motion to approve the preliminary plat as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the preliminary plat and variances by Councilman Tyra. Needs a second.
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Parsons. As I mentioned, council, it might be wise to put that notation in at this time. Do you want to see that done as an amendment at this point?
I, I just want to let it go as staff recommended. I don't see, I mean, I'm listening to Scott here, and I'm listening, and maybe I missed it, but explain to me what, what the mayor's.
Yeah, the staffs and what the engineer was looking at to shed a little more light on this is, we actually have a Santeri Sewer line, see if I can get to the aerial, that traverses, if you look farther south toward Ashley Oaks, in the bottom, there's a creek that actually bisects Ashley Oaks. Everybody may be familiar with it. That's where the sewer line is. So everything sewer-wise is going to gravity flow from the north toward the south, and the city engineer didn't see a need to actually extend or have a provision for the extension of a westward line along Old Granberry Road because, just like Ashley Oaks to the west, everything's flowing to the north. We got a development just to the, to the east of that as well that's already built, and it flows to the south. So there's, you know, unless, unless there's a need, and we do have incremental stubs for sewer connections to cross Old Granberry Road and, and Ashley Oaks, and they're going to provide a connection point to stub and cross Old Granberry Road on this as well to get it to the right of way. There's no need to traverse east and west.
And, and again, Mayor, because I, I believe when you said, and you made that motion and asked for, you know, you were talking about as it was presented. I remember that last time there was talk about that, because that line is overlay, it showed that sewer line right in the middle or something, or what else. My point is, and I thought that's what I was approving, was exactly what Scott said, so as it was presented. So tell me what.
That, that's what the motion is, sir.
Yeah, so we're good?
Yeah.
Good with that?
I, I, that's the motion. The motion is to approve as presented along with the variances. That was your motion, sir.
Yeah, we're good. When you asked about amendment.
I, I asked about the sewer, and I'm glad you clarified that. Thank you.
Thank you.
The main thing is, you got to consider across the street and how you're going to get to the sewer, should you develop on the other side where you see all those trees in the overhead.
And at Ashley Oaks, we do, if memory serves me, have two stubs for connections for boring under Old Granberry Road, and then we'll have kind of an ending point where the cul-de-sac begins on, on this street intersection as well.
Thank you for clarifying.
What are the setbacks off Old Granberry Road? Sort of a rhetorical question. Are we going to be able to expand Old Granberry Road down to there?
I'm glad you brought that up. In the preliminary plat, we meet with the county, and you can see that white line that kind of parallels Old Granberry Road. That's the dedication needed for the expansion of Old Granberry Road. So they're, they're agreeing, and it may be like 16 to 20 feet. They're already agreeing to dedicate for the expansion of Old Granberry Road their fair share.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion regarding this? We have a motion on the floor to accept the plat, preliminary plat for a 6.748 acre tract of the WG Terrell Survey Abstract Number 562 as lots one through 25, block one of the Old Granberry Villa Edition, along with its variances. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving down to item number 12, open a public hearing regarding a request of Mark Stacy of Stacy Technology and Design Incorporated for a specific use permit to allow an automatic car wash facility in a light commercial zoning district. And consider and approve an ordinance providing for said SUP. an ordinance providing for said SUP. This property is located approximately 450 feet east of the intersection of US 377 and Waters Edge Drive, and is described as lot 5, block 1 of the Walmart Edition. Gentlemen, this is next door to the Whataburger. For clarification as to where this is?
Stonewater parking lot, right?
It is the Stonewater Church parking lot. And the applicant has no issue with parking because it's already a parking lot onto which he's going, is that correct?
It's a legal lot of record. So what you see bounded in blue is a legitimate platted lot of record, even though it, from a, you know, when you put your boots on the ground, it looks like overflow parking area that's all part of one recorded lot. It's actually part of a separate recorded lot, singular of what is for the Texan Plaza or the church. So that being said, he has a legitimate lot of record that he can pull a permit on for that area denoted in blue. Self-sustaining for his own parking, his own maneuvering, and it was platted in accordance with subdivision ordinance at the time. Now, what's being proposed, it's zoned light commercial. What's being proposed is a request for an SUP to allow for a automatic car wash, non-attended, to be placed on the site. We've correlated the site design with our maneuvering requirements, our stacking requirements. There'll be one parking spot for, again, this is automated, there'll be a mechanical room with a small office just in case an attendant needs to show, but that one space does meet our zoning ordinance requirements for the parking to support this proposed use. I do want to show you the elevation of what's being presented. It's a pretty good-looking building. Again, some of the newer technology for automated washing, and Mark is here in the audience. Mayor, I'll defer back to you, but I will close with P&amp;Z and city staff recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, sir. Normally, it's permitted in a heavy commercial or industrial to have a car wash, and that's the reason for the SUP, because it is a light commercial zoned area.
That's right.
And there, I noticed there's not a timeframe on this SUP either. Once again, it's just a request to operate a car wash within light commercial. Anybody from the public want to? Let me ask council, anybody on council want to ask staff, any questions?
Mayor, I'll say that I go to Stonewater Church.
I need you to speak into that microphone, sir. You're relaxed too much. That's tomorrow.
I talked to Casey Oliver, and I'm sure Casey probably talked to you too, Scott, maybe about this. I was concerned about the parking for the church, even though they didn't own the property. He said, no, they didn't have a problem with it. I talked to Darren Schultz, the guy that owns the property, and he said, and he goes to church there too, and he said, I've talked to him and said, there's not a problem. That was my only concern. Have you heard about the same?
From what I understand, the discussions between the two parties have been very amicable, and they understand that this is a legitimate lot of record. The gentleman has an interest in developing his property, but the coordination between the two property owners have been very amicable and fruitful, so.
And it's not putting any kind of a jeopardy on the parking scenario for the church. The church still has ample parking at that location. Any other questions for staff regarding this?
With the parking, though, don't they have to share the entryways, the ingress and degress?
They do. There's one entrance point on and off this property, and of course, it was platted that way and captured based on the older ordinances in play at the time. From what I understand and talking to the two parties, there's not an issue regarding ingress and egress through the lot to the subject site, again.
Well, they both have a right, I mean, they both have a right to that property. They can come in on Waters Edge, or they can come in on 377.
It'd just be tough getting your car washed during church.
From the city standpoint, it was platted, and there was one entry point, you know, and, you know, so we're just going to work with the ordinances that put this plat in motion at the time and go with that.
All right, so we've got a public hearing open. Anybody from the public want to speak regarding this? Mark, do you want to come up and say something?
Mark Stacy of Stacy Technology and Design. I just want to say, we're really looking forward to the project. Staff's been wonderful to work with, and basically, if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right. This is your chance, council, if you've got any questions for Mr. Stacy.
What's the price going to be?
Have no idea.
$3 car wash.
Couldn't say.
Mr. Stacy, there was a car wash, automated car wash that came before us, Mayor, over a year ago, and it didn't pan out, didn't work out. Do you feel this one is 100% go and you get approval tonight?
I'll tell you what, this particular piece of equipment we're putting in, it's state-of-the-art. I've been building, operating, been associated with car washes since 1978. Never seen a piece of equipment that does the job that this machine does. If you put a scale of 1 to 10, this thing will put out a 9.5. Doesn't leave a lot of room for improvement. The downside to it is, is we can only put out, with this facility, 21 cars an hour. Not a huge impact on traffic. But again, as far as the overall experience people coming in, it's a nice-looking facility. We've got good traffic flow, easy in, easy out. The ability to go to Waters Edge and catch a red light for the left-hand turn on 377, you know, it's a phenomenal situation. Basically, we give people a good experience from the get-go.
We're dying to know, what's the, if we approve it tonight or when we approve it, what is the, when are you going to start this project?
We're already in process with the drawings. Darren was excited, we've jumped the gun a little bit. We're hoping to have everything ready for, to begin the permitting process next week.
That'd be great.
Maybe as early as next Thursday or Friday.
Do you have one of these in the Metroplex anywhere?
We've built, we've put in on this machine, 28 of them since the first of the year. All Metroplex, Fairfield, Texas.
Mineral Wells, have you got one there or not?
I'm sorry?
Mineral Wells, do you have one there?
Absolutely.
That's what Darren was.
Grand.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy. All right, we're going to close the public hearing at this time. Entertain a motion for a specific use permit to allow an automatic car wash facility in a light commercial zone located at lot 5, block 1 of the Walmart Edition.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Allen needs a second, please.
Take it.
Second by Mr. Hewlett. All in favor of approval of the SUP, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number 13. Consider and approve a budget adjustment of $15,000 to the Hood County Committee on Aging Expense Line Item. Currently, the budgeted expense for Hood County Committee on Aging for this year, the fiscal year 2011, 2012, is sitting at $31,000. That money has already been allocated. At our August 21st meeting, city council was approached by the area agency on aging representative, and she spoke of a loss of revenues from other sources, and I suggested we move an additional $15,000 towards the Hood County Committee on Aging as an effort to help relieve some of that fund loss. So at this time, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry. Please make a note that Mr. Perkel left.
Mayor, I move that we approve the $15,000.
Hang on, and there's reason for Mr. Perkel to have left. There's a conflict of interest, and he sits on the board of directors, so need to make that note for the record. So with that being said, entertain a motion.
So moved, Mayor.
A motion to approve an additional $15,000 towards the Hood County Committee on Aging out of this year's fiscal budget for $15,000. We have a motion by Councilman Tyra, needs a second, though. We've got a second by Mr. Hewlett. I do want to mention that this is deemed to serve a public interest in helping the quality of life for older adults and their families, and by doing so, it will help to ensure their Meals on Wheels program as well as feeding at the senior center. Any further discussion regarding this?
I have a couple of questions. Is this a 2012?
No, it's coming out 2011, 2012 budget. It's coming out of this year's.
Fiscal year in 2012.
Fiscal year.
And I thought in the conversation that the lady just asked for $9,000?
I believe that is, she said there was a loss of $9,000, that's correct.
So earlier in the year, we had a request from the transit company to increase the amount of money they receive, or we're just individually doing this, or how's that going to work in the future? It's a rhetorical question.
I understand, sir.
Do you, are you asking me to amend the budget to $9,000? If you are.
I'm asking to move the budget to $9,000, which is what she said.
I'll amend the budget for $9,000, because I think she specifically talked about Meals on Wheels $9,000, now that I recall. I'll amend it, Nen.
Councilman Hewlett, are you agreeable to that?
I agree.
All right. So we now have, hang on, we now have a motion to approve an additional $9,000 to be contributed to Hood County Committee on Aging. Any further discussion regarding this?
I'd like to say, Mayor, that I know where Mickey is coming from on this, not that I disagree with her, but these things are, to people like, I'm going to be someday, all of us are, these meals and stuff that they get. And I wish we could go ahead and leave it there, or get them some more money in the near future, because they, I've talked to several of them, has called me and talked to me about this, and they're real concerned about their cash flow. And I wish that the council would consider the 15.
And I'd like to speak to that, since we're in the discussion part, is Mickey makes a great point. She showed a need, she asked for that to be filled, it was clearly $9,000. We do have people come to us on occasion, and so, you know, we should try to fulfill that need. I think it's a great effort on your part, and on the mayor's part, but I would like to stick to what she asked for, and I'm glad that Mickey brought that out.
In rebuttal regarding that $9,000 remark, that was affecting her Meals on Wheels program. That was not the amount of loss for their entire Meals program. That was, that was as she referred to her Meals on Wheels portion of it. So there's more dollars, they've also lost funding for their Meals program at the facility.
Wayne, let me ask you, since you sit on that board, we heard the Meals on Wheels $9,000, so that's what's ringing in my head right now. What else was there?
Well, like you said, they also have lost some funding from the government besides just the Meals on Wheels program, but also the Congressmen's Meals that they serve. They're at least $15,000 down. I mean, I did the budget, I'm the treasurer.
I need you to speak into your microphone.
Yeah, I'm the treasurer, I did the budget, and that's why I put $15,000, because I was thinking of the amount of money that they have run short from the government, which I also, I thought was your comment of $15,000.
That's exactly.
You're telling me they were short from the government $6,000, and that's how you came up?
Of other Congressmen's Meals. But the reason I put $15,000 was, you know, they're even short more on donations and other things, but he had said $15,000 because she was listening. I remember the items that made him say $15,000. He said, let's put that on the list. So that's why we went for $15,000.
We don't want to shortchange anybody, and we want to do the right thing, and that's why I appreciate what Tony said, but I also have a lot of respect for exactly what Nen said, for Mickey said, because I remember the $9,000. You're saying that the mayor absolutely told her $15,000?
I told, no, that's what I brought forward, yes.
Oh, you brought forward with this motion right here?
$15,000, yes.
During our discussion with her last meeting, did you talk to her about $15,000? I don't want to promise her something that we didn't go.
No, I made no promises.
But you talked.
I just, I told her we were going to bring it forward, and I suggested $15,000 as the amount. Understanding that there were not just the Meals on Wheels program in jeopardy of having a financial loss, but also the Meals at the facility and the fact that they had loss of revenue. What we have before us right now, I want to remind you, is there is an amendment on here.
I'm just going to make, I'm going to remove my motion from the table, so I'm going to remove my motion from the table so we can be all on one page. I don't want to see any problems here. So I'm going to remove my motion and allow somebody to correct it with one clean motion.
All right. So with that being said, we, once again.
Some comments from the secretary or the treasurer of the Hood County Committee on Aging. I would like to make a motion that we approve a budget adjustment in the fiscal year ending 2012 of $15,000 to the Hood County Committee on Aging.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons, and a second by Mr. Tyra to approve $15,000 coming out of this year's fiscal year monies. That's the 2011, 2012, $15,000 going towards the Hood County Committee on Aging, over and above the additional, the original $31,000. Any other discussion regarding this? All in favor?
Well, let me make sure.
There's $31,000 that's already been allocated.
The $31,000 is, yes, in FYE 2013. I don't know that we know what the FYE 2012 originally is. I mean, that's not germane nor important.
What I was referring to is there has been, in the 2011, 2012 budget, that's this year's budget, there was $31,000 allocated towards that to help offset, I believe it was some expenses, city utilities, if I'm not right. It's sort of carries over. I just wanted to make it clear that this $15,000 that we're talking about is in addition to that $31,000 that's been allocated.
Historically, we've given money to them about that same amount. JC didn't give us credit for that that night, he gave county credit for that, but he didn't give us credit for doing this, all that, so I'll talk to him about that in the future. But as far as I know, the FYE 2013 budget also has probably $31,000 to them.
Right, but what we have before us is, let me see, let me read the budget here.
My motion specifically allocated to FYE 2012.
That was what I seconded, so it'll be spent, it'll be done this year.
2012, and that's what, and that's what we recommend.
Are you saying fiscal year 2011, 2012? That's what I want.
2012.
Thank you. Fiscal year ending 2012. Thank you. So, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the $15,000, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Perkel. Please make a note. Mr. Perkel has re-entered the city council chamber. Brings us to item number 14, consider and approve a contribution of $25,000 to the Hood County Clean Air Coalition. The Environmental Protection Agency placed Hood County, or kept Hood County, in non-attainment status because air pollution levels were starting to exceed our air quality standards. The EDC is fighting the EPA's decision, and it's pretty much been established that we will remain in as a non-attainment county. However, there has been, the Hood County Clean Air Coalition start its formation, and what they have approached us is whether or not we can add a $25,000 contribution to the Hood County Clean Air Coalition. Now, I do want to make a point here, council members, the Hood County Clean Air Coalition has not been formalized. It is not a 501(c)(3), it has not received its nonprofit status at this point, and I'm hesitant to see us contribute money to a non-existent formal coalition of $25,000.
Well, let me say that, yes, it is being formed, it's being set up, but we would not write a check unless there is a Hood County Clean Air Coalition, because your motion would be to write it. So until it is established, we would not write the check until it is formed.
What would happen there, Wayne, I mean, I'm for doing this, but what would happen if they don't have their 501(c) by October 1st? Would it still come out of this budget?
Well, I don't, you know, I'm not real concerned about the 501(c)(3) because we don't get tax deductions anyhow, okay? But I am concerned about it being a valid corporation that I'm writing a check to. So as long as they get it formed, the 501(c) can come later, okay? As far as I'm concerned, but it has to be a recognized corporation where I can write the check.
Talking with Joey, he says it's going to be done pretty quick. Is that correct?
Yes, they're working on it, so.
Wayne, and I understand you're on the Economic Development Board, and I talked to Joy, I had lunch with Joy today, and I asked about this specifically. to Joy, I had lunch with Joy today, and I asked about this specifically, and it's my understanding that, that, that EDC is really taking the lead in this, and this will be some kind of, I mean, for lack of wording, uh, branch or arm, that they're gonna have a lot of control and input into this, because they, they're the ones who, so why wouldn't we just, uh, formalize this tonight by giving twenty-five thousand dollars to the EDC, like the county did, for the, and then for the purpose of the Hood County Clean Air Coalition, and let that go in that direction? Because they, that would, it'd be earmarked, the EDC has enough, uh, we, we have a lot of folks that, that agree with what they're doing with that coalition, and I understand if we're earmarked for that. Joy said that, that EDC is gonna be the ones to be delegating out the money to hire the individual and all that sort of thing.
Well, because we're gonna be put on that, uh, to be running that corporation. I was under pressure, and which I think the mayor was too, that was gonna, they were gonna create that corporation.
Yeah, through the EDC, the EDC Board is, the EDC Board is...
No, not the EDC Board. The community would come forward with the creation of a Clean Air Coalition. It's not going to be a branch of EDC, from what I understand.
EDC's been involved in the whole fight with environmental agency and helped get this...
That's correct.
...where it's at. So, I, again, I sure like some clarification, because I saw the county, uh, you know, ante up, and, and that's a good reason to ante up, but it's gotta be involved with Joy, with those people who in fact fought that battle with us.
Well, well, Joey's gonna correct me, Mayor, you and, you and Wayne, but I, he's gonna kinda head it up until they get it organized, to get somebody to run it and take it over.
The, the, the question, though, is, is the way this is worded on our agenda. The question is that it says twenty-five thousand to the Hood County Clean Air Coalition. It doesn't say to the EDC. Now, I understand what, what we're talking about here, but I want, I want it to be known that as far as I'm concerned, the Hood County Clean Air Coalition is still in its baby stage of formulation. It is not a formal organization, it has not formalized itself, it doesn't have a, a Board of Directors per se, it's got, uh, the judge is currently the head of the coalition, but it's not formalized yet.
Well, Mayor, that, is there any way then that we could move to give that money to the EDC, that you mentioned the judge, Joy, they're the people who led the fight, and earmark it for the Hood County Clean Air Coalition?
I would suggest that we put it on the, the next, uh, City Council meeting, and, and entertain it as a approval for...
Mr. Mayor, I move, we move this item to whatever that date is, eighteenth.
September eighteenth.
September eighteenth. So, with that being said, we'll try to reword the language to accommodate these, uh, concerns. So, we have a motion, we have a second, uh, to postpone this until the September eighteenth meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries.
You understand it's just about clerical. All right. Uh, item number fifteen, considering approve a resolution naming Tex- Texas Department of Transportation Aviation Division as the city's agent for taxi lane and ramp improvements associated with the one hundred foot by one hundred foot hangar project that's currently taking place at the Granbury Regional Airport. Gentlemen, uh, regarding this particular issue, Tex Dot, if they serve as our agent, we are earmarked for some three hundred thousand dollars to go towards a taxi lane and ramp project, uh, that is going to be in a ninety-ten grant. We would wind up then being responsible for thirty thousand dollars of a three hundred thousand dollar project. This is a no-brainer, if you ask me, uh, but, uh, so at this time, I'd entertain a motion to name Tex Dot Aviation as the city agent for taxi lane and ramp improvements at our municipal airport.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilman Allen, needs a second.
Second.
A second by Councilman Tyra. Any discussion regarding this item? All in favor of approval of a resolution naming Tex Dot Aviation as the city agent for taxi lane and ramp improvements? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries.
Item number sixteen, considering approve appointment to the Granbury TV Advisory Board. Gentlemen, we had one nominee come forward, Kathy Gentry, who has requested to serve on the advisory TV board, the board, oh, I'm sorry, Judy Gentry, thank you. And, and, uh, to serve on our TV Advisory Board. The board is, uh, consisting of five members from the community, and, uh, we currently are down by two, so with that being said, entertain a motion to nominate Judy Gentry to the TV Advisory Board.
It's my privilege to nominate Judy Gentry as a member of the TV Advisory Board.
We have a motion by Councilman Parsons, needs a second.
My privilege to second that motion.
And Councilman Allen seconds that. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Motion carries.
Item number seventeen, discuss and approve a five thousand dollar retainer for legal services from attorney Ken Ramirez regarding legal advice related to the B.R.A. Water Management Plan process. And this is the process that will be taking a public hearing in sometime in November before TCEQ. I feel it's imperative that the city have a representative to address, uh, the issues of the city's concern regarding water management. Uh, my hope is that, uh, we can establish, uh, a, a request to keep some sort of a last retention of the Lake Granbury, but we need some language to bring forward. Uh, we need a written, uh, request from the city to take to TCEQ utilization of a, Mr. Ramirez puts us a legal advisor that's, uh, dealt with these kind of water management issues before, and I think he would serve the city well in our planned proposal to the TCEQ. Any other discussion regarding this?
Yes, Mayor, uh, when I saw that this item was put on the agenda, I did some research and talked to the Lake Granbury Water Group, and I noticed the president and the vice president are sitting here today. I also, uh, called the person who I've known has been at the forefront of this for years, and that's, uh, Attorney Rick Lowry. As you know, you've met Rick at some of our, uh, other, uh, events, he's been representing the Friends of Brazes for several years. I also was able to talk to Ken Ramirez, and, and obviously you saw his resume in the packet, very qualified individual, but as, uh, was actually been able to discuss with him, uh, kinda what his thought process was, because we have two things that we're talking about here, and I just don't wanna get them mixed up. When we had a meeting with the elected officials, it was very clear that Senator Birdwell and Representative Kefir made it clear, we need resolutions from the city, worded, where we can actually adopt this resolution in the county and the city. That letter can go to TCEQ, go to the B.R.A., and our attorney, I believe, I spoke to our attorney here, uh, last week, and I believe he's working on that to bring forward to a council meeting. This, this situation that came up right here about getting attorney on his retainer, I specifically asked, um, Mr., uh, asked Kenneth Ramirez, I said, "So, what is that, that five thousand retainer for?" And he said that he would have to research, and most of that, if not all of it, and even some more, could be spent just on research, knowing where to step in. When I spoke to Mr. Lowry today, he made it clear that there's much, much benefit in having someone like himself who knows it backwards and forwards. The fact is that we all, I can't speak for the council, but I definitely wanna see us intervene and, and really put a stake in the ground, showing that we support, um, this, some intervention, and our goal is to keep water in, in, at, at a level so we can keep water recreation sports at, at an all-time high, and keep the tax rate and all that sort of thing moving forward, ad valorem the whole works. Now, with that said, I think it was premature, uh, maybe the way it was worded, because the way it's worded, and I'll, I'll ask this question to our attorney, is it looks like the way this is worded, the only thing we can do tonight is approve a five thousand dollar retainer for, in fact, uh, the gentleman by the name of Ken, uh, Kenneth Ramirez, who is an attorney, uh, that specializes in these type of situations. Talking to Rick Lowry today, I found out there were three or four other qualified individuals, one being Mr. Mason, I understand Mr. Mason had some other situations, he couldn't be involved in that. I don't think our city as a whole, uh, has had enough research into this. So, what I would like to do, if the attorney would allow it, and it may be so much a variation that we can't do it tonight, like you did on the last one, but I would like to see this council give this city manager the approval to go forward and interview these attorneys, find out which one could cost us less money to get involved. And right now, there's no doubt that Rick is absolutely our guy, and he said he has no conflict, uh, because when you team up like this with Friends of Brazes, you, you have a stronger position going into something like what we're trying to do, hold back the water, uh, rights, and try to get it to a situation where we're just trying to negotiate. Alls we wanna do is come out of this, alls my goal is, is to see the city have some kind of negotiation power, some, a seat at the table, where we can absolutely get something negotiated in turn of B.R.A. getting their rights, and that's, and that's what the whole goal is here, it looks, sounds like from everybody. I'm concerned about this gentleman, not because this gentleman is, is I think a lesser attorney, we're gonna have to pay a lot of money, several thousand dollars, many thousand dollars, just for him to get caught up to speed to figure out what to do. Mr. Lowry, on the other hand, has been involved for years and can jump right in. So, city attorney, can we in fact have, do we have any discretion, do we have any leeway, or is it only Mr. Ramirez, and is it only five thousand dollars?
You have to stick to your agenda, five thousand dollars for Mr. Ramirez.
So, then I'd like to turn to Mr. Parsons. Say, Mr. Parsons, I understand you put this on the agenda, and I, and I support this work, and I wanna see us move forward, but these things become money pits, and there are other attorneys who are qualified, and I don't think our city has done, done enough due diligence to get the right person. That's why I would love to see this put on the agenda at the next meeting, where we could actually give our city manager the, the, the approval to go forward and find the best one, less money, and, and knows more about it. That way, we can, in a very condensed way, we can get what we need and go forward by November. And I'm with you on this, I'm with you on, we're not, we're not a part of this, okay? We're not a part.
No problem with that. Uh, first of all, I don't, I don't think I would be interested in Rick Lowry, uh, being our attorney in this case. I don't, uh, not, not a denigration of who he is or what he is, 'cause I've known him quite a while, and have worked with Friends of Brazes and their issues down on the river, uh, but their issues are somewhat ancillary, eyes are a little bit different, so, uh, I would prefer that we have our own counsel. Uh, in terms of Mr. Ramirez, I think if you look at his resume, and if you talk to him, uh, you are aware that, uh, he did, he did achieve the exact objective that you're looking for, and that is to maintain a water level inside of, uh, your lake. He was able to petition TCEQ and get that particular item approved for, I believe it was Town Lake in Austin, so he's done exactly what you're talking about there. Uh, I would have preferred that the language in this be a little bit different. I wanted to bring it forward in terms of, we need someone to, uh, help us, guide us, and, uh, have us ready and plan, and a, a plan in place by November the fourteenth, so we know how to move forward. Uh, basically, who's gonna be our, uh, we're gonna need, uh, expert testimony, we're gonna need experts in terms of, of what is, what does the B.R.A. plan do, how does that affect us? Does it affect us at all? It might, I mean, but we're at six ninety-one and a half, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, we don't know that, but we're gonna need people in place that are ready to, to study that plan and make comments about it. Uh, I think the hearing portion of that is, what, twelve months? We'll have twelve months within, uh, to get back into that. Uh, fortunately, uh, we are, we are extremely lucky, and we're, we owe a gratitude, uh, debt of gratitude to Tony and all the people involved in LGWA that have brought it to our attention. And we're lucky in that, uh, TCEQ remanded it such that we'll be able to be in a, a part of the process. But, um, I, if, if you wanna change it such that the city council, uh, the city manager has some choice about who it is, I don't know that I particularly, uh, am opposed to that, but, uh, it's gonna be hard to find someone that's more qualified in terms of what we're looking for than Mr. Ramirez.
And I don't, and I don't wanna come across tonight at all by, uh, by looking at somebody's resume and saying one's better than the other, 'cause me and Mickey are definitely, uh, together on this, and so I'm going to yield to the council, 'cause I wanna see some action go forward. But we're limited tonight, a retainer of five thousand dollars. I, I'm gonna ask Tony, did, did you understand through all the conversation the last week that that five thousand retainer could be eaten up just like that, on research, or did, and maybe you've heard something else?
Well, whenever, my understanding was that he was gonna charge us three fifty an hour, and the first talk was, was bringing him down here, and it was about having a conference call with him, and he said it was two thousand dollars, uh, for an hour's conference call. And I said, "Well, I thought you said three fifty an hour." And he said, "Well, two hours for studying," I think he said, didn't he, Wayne?
Yeah, he said he, he needed to do some research on it. And so, and he was just saying, "I need a contract before I come out, up and talk to you," and that's, he said, "That's what the normal process is." And so, this was just what he had said, you know, "Why don't you put me on retainer, I'll come up, I'll come up with a plan, okay? Come up and talk to you about developing the plan." And that's what he wanted, but we'll do it as a conference call, he said, "That sounds even better, but therefore I don't have to come up there," 'cause he needed to be back at ten o'clock the next morning.
Yeah.
Wednesday morning, so, he's okay with that, I don't, he said it was two hundred dollars an hour, when, when I talked to him, I remember.
Oh, really?
He, he dropped to two hundred dollars.
Well, there, there was gonna be a municipal break.
Yeah, he said a municipal break of two hundred dollars an hour, but...
You're right.
That's, that's why that number didn't make sense, when he said, "Well, it could be a couple thousand dollars," but then he explained that there'd be other hours other than the, the meeting, and he thought the meeting might go two hours.
Much, much like the city council, he may spend a little more time than just sitting in front of this dais, getting ready for these meetings.
He gets in the back room, he'll get money.
Uh, I make a motion that, uh, we approve a five thousand dollar retainer for, uh, Mr. Ken Ramirez, and, uh, get this show on the road.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Parsons, a second by Councilman Tyra, to approve a five thousand dollar retainer to, for legal services for the attorney Ken Ramirez. Any further discussion?
Mayor, you've let that other end down there talk all night long, so I wanna say a little bit about this.
I'll look your way.
I wanna, I wanna say a little bit about this, because, first of all, I think we're getting the horse before the heart, before the cart here, because when I were down there, the TC, at the TCEQ meeting, the, uh, B.R.A. was told to go back to the drawing board with a better plan. They had a pretty good plan, but they were told to go back with another one because of what we went down there with, and other people went down there with. So, you know, we were pretty successful in having the, the, uh, B.R.A. go back there and have to come back with an aggressive plan. And to me, this is giving nothing but giving busy money, and no offense to you, Mr. Attorney, but, uh, every attorney out there would love to have the opportunity to spend this kind of money right now. I mean, I don't care who you pick, they're gonna spend this kind of money, because this is just busy work, the, spending the money before anything has happened. And so, I don't think that we should be taking five thousand dollars of the, the citizens' money, of which not all of them live on the lake, and have a concern about this, but, you know, I, I wanna support us defending that part of it, but it hasn't happened yet. Why would we take the money out there and spend it right now, or put it in somebody's pocket? Because I think like Councilman, uh, Allen up there said, they're gonna start spending the money as soon as they can. That, this is good money for them. And so, I don't think we, I think we need to take another look at when we do this, and then maybe take a look at who we do it with. So, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to spending any kind of money before we even hear from the B.R.A., and we haven't heard from them, and they are gonna go out and get them more aggressive, because the TCEQ, and I listen to those guys up there, they're not on one side of the earth. They, they want them to come back with an aggressive plan, and I don't wanna put something out there and forward saying, "We don't believe you're gonna come up with one, we're ready to shoot bullets." So, with that, I, I don't think we oughta even look at this thing.
Councilman, I, I wanna remind you that they did come to the city of Granbury, they did make a presentation of their management plan. We saw that plan.
I seen it, I heard it.
We saw it. That was their follow-up plan from where they were with the TCEQ, and that's what they're bringing forward. If you listen to them speak at the PK, or if you read the transcripts from Possum Kingdom, there was some variation in what their plan was. It seems like whatever community they went into, they devised a different type of a program, and if you read the transcripts from their, their own documents, which are available online, you will see that it's in the city's best interest to have some sort of written resolution that addresses the issue of possibly making Lake Granbury...
And we can do that through our own attorney, Mayor.
I, I believe we need expertise on this, but any, anybody...
That's your belief. You had your turn, and I've had my turn.
Thank you, yeah, but, that's it. Any further discussion regarding this? We have a motion on the floor.
I would like to say a couple words, Mayor.
All right, sir.
I don't know, I heard I couldn't speak, couldn't make a motion on this, 'cause I was past president of the waterfront, so, am I legal here or not?
You're legal to talk, sir.
Not about the waterfront, it's about the city.
It's about the city of Granbury, and retaining, uh, an attorney, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, then.
Thank you, Dan. What I was going to say was that, uh, you know, I'm gung ho to get this done, but I'm not for sure, and maybe, maybe somebody can come up, maybe, uh, Joe or Judy can come up, somebody, and explain to us why is it important to do this tonight, to get this guy on board? Or maybe one of y'all can. I hate the, as you've seen the people tonight, whenever we were talking about insurance arrays, which they probably don't care if we're spending any money, lots of money we'll spend on ourselves, but do we really want to jump to conclusions here until we make sure? This guy's got a good resume, good resume. Is he going to save the water for us? How is he going to do this? That's all I'm asking.
I would, I would submit, Tony, that we're looking at a November, what, fourteenth, eighteenth day that these gentlemen bring their plan. There's no doubt, there's no doubt that they'll show up at that TCEQ meeting with a plan. They're not going to show up at that TCEQ meeting and say, "Sorry, we couldn't get the plan." They're going to have a plan ready to go. Within that plan, then you, as far as I know, you've got, there's about an eighteen-month process that the, that the commissioners allowed them after that, right? And about twelve months of that is, is discovery, or going back through this process of public hearings and going through the process. Then they have seven months, TCEQ or what those, uh, judges, whatever that judge panel is called, uh, has seven or eight months to look at the plan and make approval on it. Uh, the idea is that on the eighteenth, they're going to have a plan ready to go. And we need to have our people, in my opinion, we need to have our, we need to have our experts, our lawyers, our, whoever's going to represent us in this issue, whoever's going to be talking about it, ready to go on the fourteenth, because the time clock starts ticking. And we're going to be, need to be ready to be representing ourselves in, in, in the talks. Uh, other than that, there's no rush.
But, Mr. Parsons, you said it yourself, though, that they've got eighteen months to two years probably, after they make a decision up there. So why would we get in there and let somebody spend the money right now and start going forward with, they don't even know what they're going to propose?
Well, exactly. That's the whole idea. We don't know what the proposal is.
It's busy money.
But we need to be ready to, to move on the fourteenth, because no, you don't have two years. Basically, the hearing process, as far as I recall, is less than twelve months.
That's, that's right. And we've only got four meetings before that November fourteenth date.
How about, how about if you'd amend your motion? Because he said he'd come down here for, for two thousand dollars. And let the whole council hear it, or if that's what we're going to do, before we just, we're not giving him but five thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred.
It's a retainer to allow him to talk to us. At that point, he'd be able to talk with us back in exec, executive session regarding this particular item.
Do you think it costs five thousand dollars just to do that?
Well, he, we want him to be prepared when he does speak with us, though.
And do what with it?
Create a plan for the city.
File a lawsuit.
But they don't even know what they're talking, we don't even know what they're going to come forward with.
Well, like Mickey said, how can we intervene and be involved unless we absolutely get some man on board and start, and start educating? We've, we've heard from Rick, and we've heard from the group. Now it's time for the city to step up. The fact is that we have millions of revenue that comes off that lake. So let's treat that lake like an amenity we would treat downtown square, anything else. It is the largest, and it brings in the most revenue to each and every one of us, and none of us in the city, county, anywhere would be anywhere if that lake goes to seven, eight, and nine-foot shallow on a regular basis. So I'm going to propose that we call the question and get this deal done, and I hear you, I hear, I hear what Tony's saying. Tony's trying to say, "Hey, can we talk to him on a conference call? Can we approve two thousand tonight and get a conference call?" If he's willing to change that, um, motion, I'm willing to do that.
We have, we already have a motion on the floor for five thousand dollars, and you second it.
He could amend it for, Mr. Allen, just to be a compromise, try to work something out.
The retainer amount is five thousand dollars. That's what we have.
He is willing to do a conference call.
He is willing to do a conference call, and we could, we could put him on as a conference call and approve twenty-five hundred. It, it's, we could do it.